All right. Since after 5:30 PM, why don't we get started? This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, The Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. Jen, would you be able to confirm that this meeting was properly posted?
Yes.
Great, thanks very much. Let me stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the approval of our agenda, and I would move to approve the agenda.
Second?
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, the motion carries. The first item then after our approval of agenda is recognition of retirement, and Lenny, I know you're going to come to the podium. Get to the right spot here, so...
The end of the school year brings a lot of change and whatnot, and we are sad but also excited for one of our employees, Deb Smith, who will be retiring as of the end of this school year. She has served the district for a long time, as it says in your packet. She's served in a number of roles, and really a lot of different people, teachers, support staff, especially the Rolfs' families in the last few years have really gotten to know her, and she's had a lot of really outstanding dedicated years of service to the district.
That's great. I've got a little statement here I'd like to read on behalf of the district and the School Board. We'd like to congratulate Deb Smith on her retirement from the West Bend School District after 19 years of service to our students, our staff, and families. Deb has served the district in a variety of roles, including as member of the Human Resources Team, and more recently as a Program Assistant at the Rolfs Education Center. For the past three years, Deb has worked at the front desk at Rolfs and has been the friendly face that greets our youngest learners and their families. We are very grateful to Deb for all that she's done to advance the mission of the West Bend School District for the past two decades, so thank you and congratulations to her. Appreciate it. All right. And we have another recognition as well, and that is of West girls basketball. Is Erin here? Erin?
All right, thank you for having me, and I am excited to pass off to Joe Pittens, our head coach here. But first of all, I know we have several girls watching at home. They're all tuned in, so I want to say congratulations. Our West girls basketball team had an incredibly successful season, and it was an amazing experience not only for the team and the program, but just for the community and the support, and it was just an outpour of support, and I can't thank you enough for that. And I'm going to have Coach Joe Pittens tell you a little bit more about the girls and the season, so thank you very much.
And congrats, Coach.
First, I'd like to thank the Board for recognizing the 2019-2020 girls basketball team for their accomplishments, and the support of all our programs, curricular and co-curricular and extracurricular. It's very important. The success of a season, this season especially, but all seasons, is dependent upon your seniors, and they determine the demeanor of your team. They're the leaders. They're the difference makers of all successful and unsuccessful teams. And successful and unsuccessful, of course, can be defined in many ways. Most importantly, seniors need to understand and accept their roles for the team to flourish as a group moving in a single direction with a common purpose. Our seniors, Holly Kunkler, who was injured this Sunday before her junior season started, missed her entire junior season. She was at every practice and did what she could. She could shoot around, but she couldn't do any physical activity. She rehabbed in the offseason and came back very strong this year. Was happy for her. Maddie Retler, another senior, is going on a volleyball scholarship, and this was her first year out for basketball at the high school level, and was instrumental in our success. And I hope that she is an inspiration to some of our other athletic volleyball players that could be playing basketball. Here we go. Leah Moore attended grade school in West Bend, I think to third grade, possibly fourth grade, and then she became a California girl, came back here for her junior and senior year, and had a huge impact on our success. And she will be going on to play Division One basketball at St. Francis University in Pennsylvania. And then our last senior, little Maddie Baker, she's about here, will be playing D1 soccer at the University of Minnesota next year. But Maddie could do almost any sport. She's a game changer in basketball, and she's a player who makes all of her teammates better, much better. She shattered the school scoring record for both boys and girls this year for career, and of the 29 records we keep in girls' basketball, she holds over half of them, which is a pretty good accomplishment. And she has some company that has been there for, some of the girls' records have stood for 38 years, so it's pretty good. If you want to know more about Maddie, I could talk a long time on her. Just look up her name, and you're going to find out that she has a lot of state and local accolades, and has won a lot of things. To the season. Every season is new, and it's different, and it brings its challenges. Three years ago when I started this, I wanted to be conference champions in the New Northshore Conference, and I felt very strongly that we could be that. I don't think the kids believed me. And when they found out what they could do, they put their hearts into it, but we fell two games short because we dropped some games early. Last year, not this last year, but the year before, we fell one game short when I thought we could do it again. Coming into this year, I remember one of our, well, it's one of our captains who was a sophomore, she asked me, "Coach, we can win conference this year, don't you think?" And I kind of smiled, and I'm like, "Well, let's see what happens." We knew that we were going to be real short in the scoring department. We lost some key players, three-point shooters. And so you have to plan accordingly. First game is against Chaboggin North. It's halftime, and we are down 25 to 8. So what do we do? We went in at halftime, and I talked it over with the coaches. The night before, we had put in a 1-3-1 zone. We'd been talking about it for three years, and said, "That's all we've got left. We have to do something to disrupt." And we went to a 1-3-1 soft zone, and we beat them. We outscored them in the second half 30 to 9. The coach was not happy. He brought that up at the seeding meeting this year. It hurt our seed a little bit, I have to admit. And for those of you that understand and know basketball, we shot 20% from the free throw line that night, and it didn't get much better the rest of the season, I'll tell you that. So that meant we had to find other ways. So we changed up and used multiple defenses all season with Maddie Baker at the head, and lived off of a lot of layups and easy things like that. Where did it all lead to? We became conference champions. It was an all-out conference championship. We won 23 games, which is a new total for boys or girls. 20 was the old total. Our goal was to get to 20, and anything beyond that was jackpot, and we did that. We also fell one game short of going to state. I could talk about that game, I'm not going to.
Thank you, you were all there.
I know you were. I know you were. So were the Northshore other coaches. They were counting on us. But basketball is a game of matchups, and we knew what we were going into that night, and two of our key matchups had to be on the floor, but they sat out most of the first half, and that hurt us. But nonetheless, we had a very successful season, and it was a very, I would say, season that made you feel very fulfilled about what you did, and the girls felt that way too. In closing, I just want to thank the community for their support. As we went on, it got better and better. I want to thank the Board for your support. I saw a lot of faces there the night we beat Germantown, and Germantown was the number-one ranked school in Division One most of the year. And of course, we weren't picked to beat them, and to be honest with you, they had better depth of athletes and so on, but I knew we could beat them. There was no doubt in my mind after we scouted them, and we did, but it was a kind of exciting game. So thank you to those folks. I want to thank the parents publicly. I've got very good parents, and parents are key players in any sport. And I know we've lost a couple of our basketball coaches for next year in the Northshore, and I know that some of them had difficulties with their parents because I talk to the other coaches a lot. I like to get to know them personally. So I want to thank our parents. I want to thank the girls. They put in a lot of work, a lot of effort, great attitudes, great kids. And I want to thank our Board again. I want to thank our community, folks that came out, and I want to thank our school community. We had a lot of kids that got involved, I kept telling Erin as the year went on. She did so many things to try and promote and get kids there, and I said, "You know, just get 100 sets of handcuffs. Just cuff them, bring them to the game, sit them down in front, and after about three minutes, you can take the cuffs off because they aren't going to be leaving." And they found out how exciting it can be. So if you can find it in your budget somehow to get some cuffs, please do that. And last but not least, I have to thank Erin. She got kids to the games. She's very excited about what she does. She's a promoter. She got us a game at the Pfizer Forum. She wanted to do that last year already. I really didn't care, Erin, but she pushed it, and it was a great experience for the kids and the parents. We've got a lot of exciting things going on at West, and you need to know that Erin is at center. She's the centerpiece of those. And I've worked with a lot of different athletic directors in my years here. The difference with Erin is, if you go in there and say you'd like to do something, Erin doesn't start to talk about the hurdles and the roadblocks. Erin says, "What can we do to make this happen?" And that's huge. So I don't want to preach to the choir here, but hang on to her. She's a good one, okay? Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Coach, congratulations. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Oh, that's all right, okay. All right. There's one other recognition that I'd like to make before we begin our meeting, because we could say this to the end of the meeting, but usually what happens is, as the meeting goes along, the folks in the crowd kind of dwindle here and there. So what I wanted to point out is that our superintendent, Don Kirkergard, this is his last official School Board meeting in his capacity as superintendent, and so just wanted to say a few words of thanks. And so, Don, in 2018, I was a brand-new School Board member, and one of our very first tasks was to select the next superintendent. And when we found out that the Secretary of Education of South Dakota was interested in coming to the West Bend School District, wow, were we pleased. Someone with your experience, your leadership skills, we're thrilled, and thank you for bringing that leadership and experience to our district each and every day. Over the past two years, we've gotten to know you and Lois. We've asked you to make all kinds of decisions, and many of them were tough, but we are a stronger system because of that, and you have established and strengthened the foundation of our district going forward, and the community benefits from that, obviously. So thank you so much for everything that you have, that you have done. And so again, didn't want us to wait till the end of the meeting, thought, "Let's start on a strong note here." Thanks, Don. Appreciate it. I should also say, safe journey back to South Dakota, and certainly best wishes to you and Lois in your future endeavors. All right, of course.
I got to say a couple of things about Don if I could roast him for a couple of minutes. When Don interviewed, during the interview process, the Board talks about the community, talks about the school district, as he gets to know kind of what he's getting into and learns about kind of what we're looking for, and at the end of the interview, Don looked at us and said, "I've got the skill set that you need right now." And I was thinking about that today because it was true. And that's, you know, when you hear that from an applicant, you think, "Well, maybe this guy just needs a job," but it was true. And he came in here and kept a level head and a common sense approach, but it was backed up from years of experience, and there weren't too many things that were thrown your way that were new to you. It was kind of a, "Yep, I've had to deal with this in the past, and I know what to do, and I know who I'm going to bring along with me," and it was just the right type of leadership that we needed. I think, you know, a compliment to give you is you're leaving the district in a better place than when you came, but a big piece of it for us is going to be, a lot of the administrators, a lot of them here in the room, who you were a part of putting in some of these key positions. And some of the people that you brought in, like Lenny and Andy, they only complement the people that were already here, like Tim and Laura and Adrian and Matt, and so you're really leaving us in a strong leadership position with our administrators and our principals, and putting principals in the right buildings and things. And so I think that'll be your legacy as we look back at your time here. I made no secret to anybody in the room that Don became a personal friend of mine, and so my wife and I are really going to miss Don and Lois, and, you know, we're losing a good superintendent, but I'm losing a pretty good friend as Don leaves. So we will take you up on the offer of a vacation in South Dakota, and we'll come see you, and of course, I hope you call us anytime you come back this way.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. All right. That brings us to the public participation point in our agenda, and I do have a number of, I have three comment cards, so I'll go through the public participation announcement. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the Board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the President prior to the meeting or when allowed by the President. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and will be given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name, address, and relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The Board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The Board may refer to the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The Board recommends use of these procedures as they guarantee a fair and timely response. And so what I'll do is I'll invite those who wish to comment the Board forward in the order that I received the slips, and the first is Mary Wiegand.
Hello, good to see you all again. My name is Mary Wiegand, 5629, Colleen Lane, West Bend. So I am here about Policy 370. Came to my attention just today, thankfully, because as a Christian, I am joyful to be here to be salt and light for my Lord Jesus Christ, who I know some of you profess to follow as well. So the part of the policy, it's about co-curriculars, sports and things. The district shall not unlawfully discriminate in admission to or participation in any program or activity standard in rules of behavior, discipline actions, or facilities usage on the basis of the person's sexual orientation, gender identity, blah, blah, blah. Now, these are new. This is new, okay? I know that this has passed the first reading. I couldn't find the minutes. All I could find was a recap. I don't know why, I don't know, the minutes just weren't easy for me to find if they're there. It didn't surprise me that this was here. I've been kind of looking for it. I know that the West Bend School District has a history of jumping on every liberal agenda item, getting on the bandwagon, but you don't have to do this. The cross-policy for 411 is about education. It's not about co-curriculars. This will open up a can of worms. Now, we don't ask about any of these questions when somebody joins, like the French Club, right? But when you join sports, you do ask about that. So this is, actually, it's reinforcing an idea that a boy can choose to be a girl or a girl can choose to be a boy. Now, I'm a nurse, I know that's not true. Jesus Himself said, "In the beginning, God created them male and female." Male and female. Male and female, "to," right? So it wasn't "or." So it also will open up a can of worms about locker rooms down the road. So this is an opportunity to be compassionate and help any kids that might be gender confused, because there are kids who are gender confused. It happens mostly in middle school. Kids tend to outgrow it, but why would you, especially the ones who profess to be Christians, Kettlebrook, you know, members and things like that, assist and reinforce any idea that a child can make himself a different agenda? You're accountable. Do the right thing tonight. This could pass tonight if the majority vote for this. So take a stand, do the right thing. Don't compromise. Christians follow Jesus. Do the right thing. Kids are confused at times, and the culture says that you can do this, but it's so unhealthy. There's so many studies that this is such an unhealthy thing, and when kids are confused, they need help. They need your compassion to walk through it. So I would challenge you, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. The next participant comment card is from Jodi Geenan.
Hello, my name is Jodi Geenan. I'm from 1511 Primrose Lane, West Bend, Wisconsin, and I'm a taxpayer, and I'm here to speak on three things. One, I am here to also speak on Policy 370, and I just, part of it is, this verbiage isn't in the state statute, so I don't know why we need to add it to our local statute for many of, you know, the reasons that Mary Wiegand said, but also common sense has a segregating male and female for bathrooms, showers, sports, things like that. So by adding this verbiage in there, it is opening up a can of worms for things that aren't common sense to start happening. And at least with the state statute, when it talks about sex, that part, it has like a subsection that you can go to that says "except" in certain circumstances. So it does allow for common sense in certain things. And the way, the proposal, the way I was shown it, it does not allow for that. It doesn't, so anyway, so I would urge you to not go ahead with those changes to that policy. The second thing I would like to talk about is, should there be a virtual school? My first reaction is yes, make it a separate entity with a separate administration that is focused on making it successful, not like the charter school that was bound to the district and eliminated. And it could be different from virtual schooling that happens during a pandemic, because the teachers that are working with the students, you know, they should continue working with the students if there's a pandemic, but the virtual schooling itself, it should be a separate entity, I believe. And the third thing I wanted to talk about briefly is, several people have brought to my attention what might be the new logo for the East High School, and normally, like I would think, like, who cares? Logos are cute, whatever, but when it was brought to my attention, and after I looked at it three times to see if my eyes were playing tricks on me, I've showed it to several people, everybody comes up with the same conclusion, and I know that the best interests are at heart for the people that are trying to change the logo, but it looks like the devil with the goat. Even in the description in the West Bend Daily News, they even talked about the goatee and everything. So I'm just wondering, I don't know if this is like going to be for sure the new logo, or if there's a process where people, the school, anybody gets to choose like from three or four different logos that could possibly be the new logo. I don't know, is one person or like five people just in charge of changing the logo? I do think we should take a second look, because if so many people are seeing that, there could be an issue after we go ahead and make all kinds of sweatshirts and everything with that logo on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. All right, and the third is Pamela Rubio. If you could state your name and your address, please.
Pamela Rubio, 5877 Sand Drive. I am a parent. I'm actually here to address the agenda item regarding graduation. I am the parent of a senior, and he is a member of the East Graduation Committee. The committee, and my son specifically, has been very, very vested in trying to salvage some of their senior year, which I know obviously everyone is cognizant of. They have, the graduation committee met with the principal, they, sorry, I'm really nervous. They laid out a different, multiple different plans or options of things that they would have loved to have seen. I was very gratified to see that the district sent out a survey, that the plan right now calls for an in-person graduation. I'm actually here to just like thank the Board for, or anyone who was in charge of that, of agreeing that that was something that was important to these kids. The committee, listening to my son on this call with the principal, they really are very interested in making sure that they are able to celebrate this with their peers, with whatever staff or teachers are there. It's very important to them. So I'm not sure what the plan is or what's been arrived at at this point. They actually also asked potentially, could it be outside to help with the social distancing? There was a lot of options that these kids came up with, just kind of, you know, pow-wowing themselves to try and come up with something to salvage this. So in short, I'm appreciative of the fact that if the plan is right now to be an in-person graduation, that is what these kids want, to share with their family, their peers, their friends. And I just thank the committee and anyone who is in charge of that decision and hopefully implore you, hopefully see that happen and come through, so I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else, anyone else here who wishes to address the Board? All right. Then our public participation agenda item is complete. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we've got two items. The first is the minutes of the June 1, 2020 regular Board meeting, and the second would be resignations.
Motion to approve.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, the motion carries. All right, on to discussion items, and the first one is summer school. And let's see, I've got Jen Gettman. Hey, Jen. Hello.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few people with me tonight just to provide an update for all of you and everyone at home on summer school. Throughout this winter and spring, we've been working on what's going to happen for summer school and what it's going to look like. In winter, the Board approved the summer school program, and at that time, we started, you know, making sure we have teachers aligned, and then the pandemic happened. So we've been trying to provide updates through Superintendent Kirkergard's updates through the Board meetings, as well as just other communication of what changes are going to happen, and then what it's going to look like and when it's going to be. As we communicated earlier, everything will be virtual with the elementary and middle school opportunities starting July 6 through July 31. I am putting out a push to say, if anyone hasn't already enrolled and would like to, please do that this week. We will take some enrollment for the rest of the week. We had, today was a big day for our high school that you're here a little bit more about, but first, what I wanted to share with you is that really, with summer school, it's been a balancing act. You know, at the bottom and the root of everything we do, we want to do what's best for our students. Within that, we still need to operate and make sure that we have the staff appropriate for the classes, as well as the budgetary aspects, and just really keeping that all balanced. I'm really proud of the work that we've done to balance it all, and so we have an update for you of what it actually will look like tonight. Zach Daniels is here. He's the summer school high school principal, so he'll be sharing a little bit more about what that looks like at high school and can share a little bit more about how today went. Even though it's online, there is lots of interaction going on. And then we have Janet Hadley, who is the Alternative Education Coordinator. She'll be sharing a little bit more with you about how she's meeting the needs of students with the partnership of a regular ed teacher. It's similar to what they do during the school year, so this is a great opportunity for kids to learn and continue in their knowledge with chemistry. Micaiah Wolf is an art teacher at the elementary level, and, you know, throughout this all, we were... we were able to still have some enrichment courses at the elementary level. And she's here just to walk you through a little bit of what her class will look like, what parents and students can expect.
So in terms of the high school, we did start today. In terms of curriculum and kind of what that looks like for us, it's a little bit different from the emergency distance learning that we had this spring. We're using two different platforms to deliver lessons and things to students. One of those being Canvas. There's actually only two classes. Using that, one of them was already flipped this spring, so that's nothing new. Another one, a teacher took on it's government law to flip that to online for us, and he's taking on that challenge for our students. So far, I've heard some, some pretty good things there. The other one is Edgenuity, and that's going to be what most students are using. So that's for credit recovery, also for a couple of credit advancement classes as well. Those are, it's a company out of Scottsdale that we started using this year. They have great online resources for students. They bring in nationally board-certified teachers to create the lessons and kind of run through them for the students to watch. So our, our teachers mostly are just facilitating the learning. So checking in with the students, using things like the attendance log and the lesson mastery report to basically see where students are at. So are they, are they behind? Are they on track? Are they moving ahead so that they can determine how they're going to conference with those students? So if you see the snapshot on the right with the different colors there is an example of kind of the outline that we gave teachers in terms of how might they structure their time, how might they have their students structure their time to afford things like office hours, small group, large group, or one-on-one meeting time with students? Yeah, questions on any of that? How that looks, how that works? Anything I'm missing? Janet?
High school numbers, are we about where we, do you have an idea what we have for numbers in high school?
Yeah, there are 624 students as of today that are signed up for classes. Seats, sorry.
Seats, not students. Because there's going to be one child that's in two different classes, so that's two seats, and then one child as well. So that is last year. I think we're about 60% of what we see during the school year at this time.
So I have another question. If we have students who are here for credit recovery, let's assume that maybe they struggled with online learning this second semester, and that's why they're here for credit recovery. How are we helping them to ensure that they're going to actually get that credit if they didn't do well with online learning to begin with?
That's actually we have our next topic.
So one of the things that we put together for summer school this year that we have not had in the past is kind of a mirror of what we did during the school year. Ms. Scott, Lonnie Scott, is a chemistry and physics teacher, and her supervision this year was with me in the credit recovery class that I run at the individual credit recovery. And my class uses the Edgenuity program for credit recovery for all the different subjects. And Lonnie came in during her supervision to support the students in, who were taking physics and chemistry. And that seemed to work out very well during the school year. So we are continuing that in summer school. So we have Lonnie doing the chemistry and the physics with the online Edgenuity, and myself doing some of the other classes. But essentially, to address the difficulties that students had with the online is where, oh, the calendar went away, where you have the Google meets. We are meeting with students in small groups based on their lesson mastery, whether they are struggling with certain topics. So let's say we have a class of 24, and six of them are struggling on one particular standard that they're just not getting. So we'll take a small group of that larger class and do a Google meet with just those six. Plus, we also have the opportunity to do one-on-one with the Google meet. So we'll schedule one-on-one meetings with the students who are, who are struggling with a certain topic, a certain quiz, any of the problems that they're doing. And so we have a science expert, and then we have two certified teachers who have been using Edgenuity all year, one special ed teacher, and then myself with the regular ed. So we have three adults in the Edgenuity program that can work with the students either one-on-one or in small groups. So that kind of address, and then if a student is very proficient in the online, we just let them go. And they, you know, they ask us questions when they need it. But if they are really proficient, which several of the students are, they can work at their own pace, and they can do, because Edgenuity has certified teachers giving lessons in video, the students can learn the content, they can take their own notes, they can do the assessments and move at their own pace without having to wait for the teacher to move them along at the whole class pace. So it's kind of a hybrid of all, all the best of worlds that we can put together.
That's like a good chemistry example. In the area of math, we have one math teacher who is doing credit retake for multiple different classes. What she communicated to families and students already is that, let's say the session is the first session at 7:30 time that it starts. Well, she's always meeting with her Algebra I, Semester I retake students, like 9:30 to 10:00, and there'll be a whole class meeting on Mondays, and then it will be that small group, one-on-one on Tuesday. And then Wednesday is a large group meeting, and then small group on Thursday. So just really making sure that whether it's, it's just really about student-teacher connection, really, in that we may put office hours, but we all know that some kids may not use that. And so the small group and the one-on-one time and the large group lesson time, whether it's, hey, our whole class didn't get this, or we have that conversation in small group, that's what that time is structured. As we were setting up these, this is just one example, but I have, I think, like, six different schedules based on the content, based on the teacher, and based on the time and what they already know about their students and the content. At the elementary and middle school level, what we provided was an outline. They'll continue to use Google Classroom, and we provided an outline with Google Slides of what each day could look like. We want to offer kids opportunities, but not make it require that you need to hop online and meet with the teacher every day. We certainly are saying you're more than welcome. But what we've done is outlined the, the lesson so that each day there's a little to do for each student, but not overwhelming. And then a touch base throughout the week too with the teacher. And that touch base might be the teacher just doing a read aloud, or checking in saying, hey, tell me what you've been reading. You know, how's it going? What are you, you know, what are your ideas from the At the elementary level, we were able to have some enrichment classes. One way we were able to do that is by combining some of the classes. So one of our enrichment classes is 3-2-1 Math. That will continue as always. It's more of like games and math and that sort of thing. So that will continue. Art Flair will continue, and that's why Makia is here. We'll also have Be Fit, and we blended that with a class called Active and Well Kids. We didn't have enough enrollment in each class to run them separately, but with some creative thinking and some eager teachers, we were really able to say, hey, what do you think of combining these classes? And, you know, really just started to brainstorm so that we could get more students who already were enrolled to just stay enrolled in the summer school program. Mad Scientists and Field Trip Fun and Journaling are two other enrichment ones that we are offering.
Hi, I'm Makia Wolf. I've been teaching Summer Heart Flare probably for 12 years now, going virtual. I definitely had to think outside the box, but I didn't want to take away from the students. So I basically am creating where they have, whenever their class starts, they'll have 30 minutes. They'll get a welcome video, pre-recorded from me, along with a art piece that I want them to talk about or think about before they meet with me, and a draw with me lesson. That gives them about 30 minutes to wake up, get ready, log into the computer, make sure they're there. About 30 minutes into the class, I want to do a whole meet, do roll call if they're there, and then basically explain the whole lesson for the day. And Jen and I have been working really hard because now I'm actually going to give them the materials that they will need for all the lessons that I've been preparing for the summer, instead of doing like the distant learning where I had to guess what they might have at home. They will actually have everything they need for every lesson I have designed for the summer. And they're designed in a way to be done in that day, or even with a couple hours extra if they want to continue on that project. During that time, after I give my quick little lesson, I will remain online so they can come and go because I am sending them outside for things. So they can ask me questions anytime they want. We'll have a check-in, show and tell on what they've done that day, and then we'll see them the next day. So I want to run it like I normally run my normal classroom, but just through a computer screen. So, any questions?
Jen, with the mad scientist, will they have all the supplies in advance too?
Yep, they're all the enrichment classes.
We have set aside some packing days for us at the ESC to pack everything together and get it labeled. And then we'll be asking parents to come pick that up on certain nights. We've aligned the, some of the parent pickup nights with technology. Tim and I were working on that this morning. Last but not least, I just want to recognize the people that are here tonight, but also part of the team who aren't here. And one person I really want to just make a shout out to and to thank you is Linda Davinsky. She, if you don't know her, she has really been the backbone for summer school for many years. There's been a lot of turnover at the ESC, like you all know. Granted, a couple of us have been here now a couple more years, but when we had that turnover, Linda was a constant face for summer school. She was answering parent calls, getting student emails, working on the schedule, working with whoever were the principals or the teachers. And she really did an amazing job. So I just really want to recognize her and thank her publicly because she continues to be a great addition to the team. Does anybody have any, and Linda's not here. She wanted to attend a different meeting, but she did say she was going to try and help both of at the same time. Is there any questions or more information you would like about summer school?
Any questions?
Today was the first day. We had some, we had some minor issues. I won't, I'm, I'll be honest with about that. We had some last-minute planners and some last-minute people getting online, but technology was awesome this morning. So thank you, Tim and your whole team. We were all answering those questions, and Janet too. She's been here since seven o'clock, typing away of like making sure everyone had the access that they needed, so.
Obviously, we'll be curious in the, in the outcomes. When do you think it would be normal that we might hear about that?
The, about the overall enrollment. Typically, at the end of summer school, we provide an update. We have until October, I believe it's October 1st, to give our enrollment numbers and calculations for that. So we always come back in winter, but we can do it sooner. Or I can just give you a heads up, just like, hey, here's what it's looking like. Because today we had some students drop. Tomorrow, some might say, whoa, you want to meet with me? I'm out. We hope that doesn't happen, but we want to be mindful of that. So we can just provide an update.
When you do that update, can you include a comparison with previous in-person summer school?
Yep, thanks.
I think last year's first day of summer school at the high school, we had a water main break and didn't have, we had to cancel the very first day last year. Things are looking up.
Right, it's all a matter of perspective.
Thanks for your creativity.
Yeah, thank you. All right. The next item is the annual seclusion and restraint update, and that is Sharon Caitlis and Matt Durant. And there they are.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, I guess I'm going to start. Thank you again for having me here tonight. Last time I was here, I was here for head start stuff, and now you get to hear me on the other half of my job, which is people service, and tonight, as it relates to our seclusion restraint report. So we'll start with the basic definition of seclusion and restraint. So seclusion is restricting a student from leaving a space, and the restraint is withholding that student's mobility. The next two slides talk about what we do and how we do it. So we contract with a company called CPI, which is Crisis Prevention Institute. They teach a course called Nonviolent Crisis Intervention. We currently have four staff that are trained in this, and we utilize them as train-the-trainers model. We have another one being trained in August. So then we will have five on staff for the coming school year. We have different tiers of how we do our training. So pre-K through sixth grade, they are required to train every year because as you will see, that have, seclusions and restraints happen more readily at that level. At Badger and High School, we focus on de-escalation strategies, and we utilize our school resource officers if any of those seclusions and restraints happen at those settings. So they still refresh, but they refresh less often, every three years instead of every one year. What we do, so we document every seclusion restraint that happens in the district. Parents are notified within 24 hours. New for next year, and towards the end of my presentation, there's many updates that will be changes for the 2021 school year, but we will be sending a copy of the report to parents within three days. Trade, data is always tracked by site, by teacher, and we look for patterns. And if patterns emerge, then we support with coaching by myself, other coordinators in the district, or other staff like our nonviolent trainers. So what you have in front of you is the data by site and by type. We split restraints and seclusions because we see seclusions as sort of less intrusive than a restraint. So we always want to focus on using that strategy first. The third column, or the fourth column shows that they're combined because it often moves from, it starts as a seclusion, and then it moves as a restraint. And that seclusion, again, is really just giving that student that space and time to de-escalate, and hopefully it doesn't go into a restraint.
Matt, can I, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you?
Absolutely.
Just for clarification, are those events unique, all unique individuals, or are they, could, is it possible that, that four of the five events at Fair Park were by the same student?
Yes. And you'll see that in two more slides.
Got it.
Yes.
Thanks.
This is another way to look at that same set of data. And we do see that there's a couple spikes in our data, and there's a reason for that, which is what we're going to talk about right now. So we have two alternative education students, and it's our belief that those alternative education students are best placed at their homeschool sites. So we do understand that two of those students that are at their homeschool sites have caused the peaks that you saw in that previous slide. So those two individuals accounted for 36 of the total 48 events in our school district. In totality, seclusion and restraint has only been used with 15 students across the entire district. For a district our size, that is a very, very small number, and it's something that, you know, we talk to our staff about being proud of. One of the 15 students is a regular education student. We always want to mention that because our students with special needs, they have IEPs that drive a lot of that, and a regular education student doesn't. So we put more in place when it's a regular education student.
Matt, I have another question.
Absolutely.
Is the seclusion, in order to protect the student, requiring the seclusion, or is it to protect other students in the vicinity of the student?
Right. So we only use seclusion and restraint when the student is going to harm themselves or harm others. So that seclusion is typically both. It's to protect the student, and it's to protect anyone else within that vicinity, including staff and students. So we track our data over time. We're looking at lots of years of data, but I think it's important to show that, you know, we tend to be hover either right above or right below that 50 mark. And again, that's, that's incredible for our staff. So it's something for us to celebrate, that it's a very small number of students and a very small number of events. When we look at across time, because we're always looking for patterns and, and things that we can do, the patterns are very, very consistent. It's always either right before or right after a large calendar break, or typically Mondays and Fridays, because there's a transition in there between expectations of school and expectations of home. So we know that those are things that we necessarily can't control, but we look for patterns that we can. So next steps. So we're going to continue to train in nonviolent crisis intervention. It's clearly working in our district. We are in year three of training as teams, and this has been probably the biggest change. So if you are Fair Park, you get together with all of the Fair Park special education teachers, all the Fair Park special education paraprofessionals, and you work as a team to figure out, okay, what are we going to do to support kids before it moves into seclusion and restraint? Because that's the strength of nonviolent crisis intervention. It's all the preventative things that we can do on behalf of students before we end up in a tough situation. We are going to continue to train in August. So August will look a little bit different. So CPI just put out a virtual platform, like many of other vendors have. So we're going to do the virtual platform with staff. And then hopefully in September, if our social distancing has changed, then we'll be able to practice the hold part of it. If not, then we're just going to have to postpone on that for a little while, or be creative and do things like practice a hold on someone at your home and videotape it so that you can still be certified. Because getting certified is what protects our staff and students. Because getting certified is what protects our staff and students. So this is the big change. So the previous act had been in place for about 10 years. Act 118 was passed almost the same day that we left our traditional school in March. So as you can imagine, DPI was not focused on putting out a lot of information related to our new act. So we know that there's going to be further guidance coming from DPI. Right now, these are the things that we know and the things that we're working on. So the biggest change is that seclusion restraint documentation now applies to our law enforcement. So we've already contacted chief about that, and he's aware. We are going to come up with a mechanism that makes it easy for our school resource officers, or any officer that comes into the building and has to restrain a student to be able to document it and then feed into our data. So we are expecting our data to look different next year because of that change, so just kind of keep that in the back of your mind. Parents will receive a copy of the report within three business days. I think I mentioned that. And this is the part where we're looking for some more guidance from DPI. After the second incident occurs in a school year, an IEP team must take, an IEP team meeting must take place within 10 business days. So it doesn't say what happens after the third, fourth, and fifth event for that same student. So we're looking for some more guidance, and we expect that to be coming shortly. This is a change only in date, so we always did a presentation to you over the summer on our numbers. So we're fulfilling that requirement right now. What has changed is we never submitted the numbers to DPI before. So it looks like by December 1st, they're going to ask us what our numbers are as well so that they can keep data. It's not something that districts readily share. But again, I know that in comparable sized districts, when we'd meet at a state-level meeting, you know, again, we're very, very low. So we're doing a good job. Questions or comments on any of that?
Question on the law enforcement piece of it. So if a kid steals something from the vending machine up at the high school, and a police officer is involved and maybe puts him in cuffs to bring him up to the resource officer's office to interview him, I mean, that's a restraint, right? So now that will get reported, even though when you started, you said that a kid would be restrained typically because there may harm themselves or others. This kid's not going to harm anybody. He just, he or she might have stolen something. So do I understand that right? That that's kind of how the law enforcement piece gets involved next year?
Yeah, so the limiting the mobility is, is what we've been defined by for so many years. So if, if that resource officer has to direct them to a location, that is a restraint in some way, so.
Handcuffs or not, just directing them, come with me.
Mm-hmm.
But if it's a principal saying that, that...
So come with me is okay if the student walks along with you. Because, I mean, that, that happens in schools all the time. It's, let's walk together and we're going to go somewhere. The, the part that is the restraint is when you have to actually maneuver the student to a certain location. So it looks like that, from what we know right now, it looks like that would be counted.
Yep.
Do you think they'll still be, we'll be able to see the division there, though? Will they, you can combine them, but then also separate them too, so we can see?
Yes. So we've already created our documentation form for next year, and one of the changes on the form is, I'm a school staff or I'm a West Bend Police Department staff. So we will be able to separate the data. I think when, when it comes time for DPI, I don't know if they're going to ask us if there's, for that division, but we want to see that division.
Matt, it's always interesting when you get inside of the data and you see what it tells you. And, and your Monday-Friday example, have you been able to develop strategies, maybe more so for Friday, to lead into the weekend where you know certain individuals are more challenged? Let's create an environment that better fits that scenario. Not quite sure how you necessarily do it on Monday, because their weekends are all different and so forth. But have you been able to come up with some plans for, for effective management that way?
Absolutely. So you guys have heard many times before, we talk about being trauma-sensitive. That's where our biggest thing for our buck goes. So we really are, we start that Monday a little bit slower for that student, and that Friday, we give them lots of front-loading of, like, here's going to be your expectation, you know, and here's what is headed for the weekend. So we really focus on that, the trauma part of it for a lot of our students.
And if you plot that out over the course of the school year, because you don't know the student necessarily at the front end, you maybe have higher frequency, but do you see that decline over the year? That, you know, those, those strategies are effective?
Informally, I can say that, I can see peaks and valleys with major life events, right? So, you know, if you've had, again, when we focus on trauma, if you have that divorce in that household or something that is traumatic to that student, you can see more peaks and valleys by student level. When you look at it that way, it's probably harder to look at as a larger.
Okay. Unique circumstances.
Very student-specific.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I just have one comment, really. Knowing a family that has one of the kids that probably are in the numbers there, I will say they are a happy customer and fortunate that their kid is going to the West Bend School District. They have told me on numerous occasions that it's good to see our numbers are low. I know, like, no news or press, sometimes people don't get the thanks and praise. So this fam, on behalf of this family that I know, they say thanks. They leave a, lead a challenging life, right? Their kid is called home from school, that means they can't work and get paid. So, so teaching and educating these challenging students is so very important to the community, and thanks for your help. And that's on behalf of this one family.
That's fantastic, and that's why I brought that up, about really focusing on educating students at their homeschool setting, that instead of shifting them into an alternative setting, that has really paid off for a lot of our families. So, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda, units of study.
I create great. And to piggyback off of that, Heidi Svengola is going to share with you a presentation, you want to pull up, on the units of study. And the, if you recall, last year, we revised our literacy model and are moving forward with a comprehensive literacy model. This was year one of implementation, and next year will be year two of implementation. We've done some revision along the way. We had a, have a training model where we train and then implement, and so teachers have some guided practice and some further coaching with their literacy specialists. And so we've made some revisions along the way. We started our, our language workshop last year. Our intent was to begin the units of study process during the school year this year, so we would be ready to implement our first units of study in fall. With the pandemic happening and us shifting to virtual settings, we are beginning the units of study process this summer, with the intent of the first units being implemented at semester. And so just a bit of a slowdown there. Time for our staff to come together during the summer to work on developing some of those units. Now, obviously, it won't be every staff member in every grade level, but we have a representative group that will be together. And Heidi's going to share with you some more information about the units of study and the work that will happen this summer.
All right. Hello. It's good to see you guys again. I feel like I didn't see you all year and now twice in two weeks, right? So just want to update you a little bit, like Laura said, about the comprehensive literacy framework, but I want to put you in the mindset of, why do we want to take this approach with our students? So if you haven't read this already, I just want you to take a minute to read the passage that's up there on your screen, and just think about what is the main idea of that passage. It's not going to be a pop quiz, so if you're ready, I'm going to go to the next slide real quick.
Oh, I'm false.
Right?
A grammarian.
So now I want you to read this passage, and I want you to think about what the main idea of it is. Was one of those passages easier for you to find the main idea of? First or the second? It's two. Why? Current verbiage, okay. Good for you, because most people don't even know how to say it, so. So current verbiage, okay. Why else? Was the fir, or the second one easier to understand than the first? Heard the story before, so you had background knowledge of it, right?
Well, it's not that long. So the main idea, I mean, they're telling the story, but like, what's the main idea of the process?
Got it. Yep.
But what, what, just lots of things that...
You're right.
They're pointing us up to the leader, which I don't need to write or...
That was a spin I didn't take, so I didn't prepare for that answer.
This is why I struggled in English III.
I'm going to need to be a reflective practitioner, I think on my feet for a second, but you're exactly right. But my goal was, was for the second one to be easier for you than the first, for kind of the reasons you mentioned. The vocabulary, the verbiage was an issue, the background knowledge posed an issue. And those are some of the things that we know about our students in our classes today, is that oftentimes, the biggest distinguishing factor about whether or not they are successful is their background knowledge. It's the vocabulary that they have. It's not about whether they can find the main idea or not. Toni could find it because she knew, I can't say it as eloquently as she did, what a boulangerie is, and others could, had no background of that, right? So it makes a big difference what background knowledge you have. In addition, we know that acquiring knowledge, it's like Velcro. Once you know a little bit about something, to build on it is a lot easier. So if you know nothing about it and somebody's asking you to build upon it, it's really hard to do. It's really hard when you don't have those starting pieces. So the whole point of our units of study this, that we're working to develop, is to work on building student knowledge along with the skills, and not just, can you identify a main idea? Great, I could if it's about dinosaurs, but if I know nothing about planets, I can't do it. So it's about leveling that playing field. So when we think about, how are we going to do that? This is kind of our framework that we've utilized for some of our professional development this year. We've talked a lot about the language workshop, which is up there at that top, and then going down into those other pieces, which have been in our schools for a long time, having that idea of students having a writing block and a reading block and a content block, meaning science and social studies. Those are not new practices. Those are practices that have been in our schools. The new practice is up there at the top, that language workshop. So what is language workshop? Really, our goal is to build students' background knowledge, which you just realized was going to be key to you, about building that vocabulary, that current pieces there, and then helping them through that comprehension process. So it's really a big equalizer in that educational platform of all of our classrooms. So language workshop, as that graphic showed, will end up becoming our backbone of our integrated units. It's really going to set everything up and create this flow so that students have opportunities to manipulate that same vocabulary across their day, versus I'm only hearing it in science, or I'm only hearing it in social studies. They're having time to play with it over and over and over again, and like Velcro, stick more things to it and really build upon that. What we have done so far is we've identified some tentative themes for K-8. They are tentative because we gave it our best shot, we're getting teacher feedback, and we're revising based upon that. But those themes are building off of the intentional connections to the new social studies standards that were approved earlier this school year. So we know based upon those standards, these are the units of study, and now we're looking to say, how can we purposefully integrate that into our ELA time? So students are having those multiple opportunities to make those connections. So there will be a team, a cross-representative team, like Laura alluded to earlier, that's going to do this work. For background, that team will consist of a representative from every K, K-4 classroom at every site. So one kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade teacher from every elementary site, as well as then three reps across each of the grades five through eight that teach ELA. It will also include our literacy specialists and our instructional coaches, as well as myself. That team will look through some of the new standards that are out there. They will develop a common framework for developing units, and then they will, like Laura said, begin that work this summer and move forward into next school year to build upon that work. This was also linked for you in Board Docs, but this is kind of that tentative scope and sequence. You'll notice there are some yellow highlights in there. Those are the things where we're like, ugh, those aren't going like we thought they were going to. We need to make some revisions. I will point out that in the time that I made this screenshot and sent it over to Board Docs, there was one change. In grade five, quarter four, that one is now also highlighted yellow in the separate document that you have. So there were some changes there. So why would we want to develop our own? Why couldn't we just go to a publisher and say, hey, give us what you have? Because we all know, honestly, that would be a lot easier, right? There are a lot of reasons why we would not necessarily want to do that. Part of it is because we're not building any of our own teacher expertise when we do that. Teachers need to be experts on the students that are in front of them. They need to know, what is this student's background knowledge? What are the gaps that I need to fill? What is the book that I need to pick? If we just go with a publisher, they don't look at the students that are in front of them. They look at the manual, and they say, here's my next book, here's what I need to do. And we need to say, what do we need to do for the students that are in front of us? The students that are here in West Bend, not the ones that are in Kewaskom or Slinger or Germantown, the ones that are here. What do they need? And this will allow us to do that. So I have some video clips. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get anyone to be here with me tonight. They wanted to have their summer schedules and had their things planned, so I have some virtual participation in this way. I technically have seven clips, but I'm also keeping an eye on the time, so I'm just going to narrow it down to three for you this evening. So just bear with me here for a second while I scan through. So this first clip is from Jenny Robinson. She was actually here two weeks ago with me, and she's, again, as a reminder, our Badger literacy specialist. So she works with seventh and eighth grade students.
Hello, I'm Jenny Robinson, a literacy specialist at Badger Middle School. I strongly believe that incorporating knowledge and concepts into literacy instruction at the middle school level is essential in developing students that are college, career, and citizenship-ready. This type of literacy instruction naturally increases the rigor of critical reading, writing, and speaking skills, and it will allow all students to build conceptual knowledge and understand multiple contexts and perspectives. Most importantly, incorporating knowledge and concepts into literacy instruction will increase our students' ability to construct meaning from analyzing real problems and become the creators of their own solutions.
So then to look at the five-six perspective, oops, oh, I keep going wrong. This is Kathleen Erickson. She is the literacy specialist at Silverbrook Intermediate School, and her first, her perspective on developing these units, the impact that it will have on that deep comprehension for our students.
For our new ELA and science social studies units, I think the incorporating knowledge and concepts into our literacy instruction is going to be an important part to help accelerate students' achievement in literacy. Deep comprehension comes from when students can synthesize multiple sources and multiple texts. So that's going to be a natural alignment when we have those texts for both of our science, social studies, and literacy classes. Good reading teachers already do a lot to provide that background information and help build up the concepts of items that they are reading. This way, when we're tying it into things for science and social studies, it's not just in isolation or for just some random text that we will read one time. This will allow for some really deep transfer, which is the goal of what Linda Doran wants us to do in our PCL work, is to really have that transfer and that time for students to gain that deep comprehension, really working at that students' top optimal zone where they can get the most for the bang for their buck for both science and social studies and literacy. And so I'm looking forward to incorporating both of these into our units of study.
And then lastly, for the elementary perspective, I have Mary Ellen Socia. I know it's a really bad screenshot. And she is the instructional coach at Green Tree Elementary. Oop, clicked on something wrong.
I'm thrilled to have the opportunity.
I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to speak to you about some of the exciting ELA work that is currently underway in our district. We are in the process of weaving social studies content into our ELA instruction. This is a critical step in ensuring that all of our students have the background knowledge needed to apply the skills we know they have learned. It has been said that background knowledge is the glue that makes learning stick. In order to comprehend a story or text, readers must possess some basic knowledge and vocabulary related to the topic. Without greater efforts to build background knowledge, differences in children's knowledge base may further widen the gap in students' vocabulary and comprehension. The work that is underway will serve to level the playing field for our students and ensure that we fulfill our West Bend School District vision of excellence for all students.
So we have a lot of support from all of the buildings K eight in developing these units. So, we, I know, are going to have a lot of work going forward. I know there's going to be the curriculum committee of the board next year. So I'm hopeful that we can have some collaboration there, maybe have you join even some of our sessions so you guys can see what's going on and we can answer questions. But what questions can I answer now?
Can you give them an example of something that you would have the kids read in West Bend that they might not be reading in Kewaskom or Germantown? I guess, I, I don't think of the, the Washington County communities as being that different.
Yeah, so it's not necessarily that there's necessarily different books than what they'd have access to. It's our intentionality of what we're doing with those books. So as an example, I'm trying to think of a good title off the top of my head. The Name Jar was a book that came up. And it is a story about a, a girl who has a, I believe it's a Chinese name, or maybe it's Japanese. It'll get confused in my brain right now. But she doesn't like her name, and she wants an Americanized name. And she's going through this whole process throughout the book of kids putting name suggestions in a jar for her. And it's talking about what makes us unique and what are those connections? And that intentionality then of, how are our families unique? How are our families alike? How are they different? How can we identify the main idea with that? So it's leveraging really high-quality books like that to make intentional connections to our content areas, as well as to our ELA practices. So everything will stem off of high-quality children's books like that. Versus, here is a poster with some contrived passage on it that we're hoping kids will be making meaning of, and that we see at one time and we fold it up and put it away and don't utilize it again. This is utilizing, like I said, leveraging those high-quality picture books across a week or across two weeks' time to build really deep meaning with it. Yeah? Any other questions?
Is this an approach that's commonly used by schools? I mean, it seems great in that it's customized, you know, by our, by our teachers, for our students.
Yeah.
I'm just curious if this is something that's widely adopted, or if it's up and coming? Can you maybe just give a little perspective on that?
Right. So the Partnerships and Comprehensive Literacy Framework, about fifteen Wisconsin school districts are utilizing this framework. There are then others across the country that also utilize it. Missouri has a lot, Arkansas, California, Maine, and I think maybe Washington is the one I'm leaving out right now, that utilize it quite, quite heavily. So it's not necessarily across the entire United States, but I would say it's definitely growing in its popularity and growing in its momentum to be responsive to students. And knowing that we don't necessarily just want to stack, like, here's science time, now put it away. Now we're stacking social studies, put it away. Now we're stacking ELA, put it away. But how can we make those connections for kids so that when they're out in the real world, they can see how those connections and work together and how they can be formulating really, um, deep knowledge and deep thoughts about what's happening in the community and their environment and how to impact it?
Thanks. Other questions? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And the pop quiz.
Right.
All right. Laura Jackson is going to lead us through the discussion of West Bend Virtual Academy.
Good evening. I was up here last board meeting to talk with you about the expansion of the West Bend Virtual Academy to include grades K through six. At the time, I thought we may be ready to bring a vendor to you to talk as a partner. And we are not yet ready for that. I've been in, working with Mr. Kirkagard and Ms. Wimmer on the next steps with regard to our virtual program. And at the July fifteenth, we're confident we will be, everything will be secured with a vendor to bring to you for that program. But I would like to talk a little bit more about a few of the details in regards to the virtual program. So the, um, just a reminder that it is not homeschooling. It is attending public school while at your home. It's not the same as the emergency distance learning that we had. Student schedules would include time with their instructor each day, and then time working independently. That the amount of time the, the at-home partner spends, whether that at-home partner is mom, grandma, aunt, uncle, dad, next-door neighbor, or babysitter. The at-home mentor for younger students spends more time helping the student log in, get going, and working with the virtual teacher to monitor the student productivity and attendance and participation. The, um, West Bend Virtual Academy is a program within our schools. And so as we look at it as a program within our schools, what that means is a student has to be enrolled to the West Bend School District, attending our schools to access that program. The, we talked a little bit about open enrollment as a potential in the future, and that would be if we had a separate virtual school in the West Bend District. Right now, it is a virtual program. Linked on the agenda for today, on the executive summary for today, is our charter school policy. With that policy that we have in place, we would need to, by September one, discuss with the board opening a charter school for the following school year. And so that would mean, before September first of this year, if we wanted to open a charter school, a virtual school, as its own entity, in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we would need to have some conversation about that before September one. With that, our original plan, and I've spoken with Ms. Wimmer about this, and she's, agrees that the original plan is, is still really good. We're expanding the program this year. Next year, we would work on training our teachers locally to really be the instructors on a day-to-day basis. And then year three, we would be looking at opening a virtual charter school in West Bend. So up until that time, it would remain a program of our schools. So with that, Nancy Kunkler, our communications manager, has been working on the marketing plan. At this time, that would be just to our local families, to families of students enrolled in the West Bend School District that we would be sharing the marketing plan for, because the student has to be enrolled in the district. Are there any questions? One more thing, just to reiterate that the curriculum is not the exact same resources that we use in district, but it's parallel. So same Wisconsin standards that we're working towards, that are approved by the school board, a different way of getting there.
Couple of questions. So, um, looking at the near-term opportunity where this is, is, um, the, the program being offered next year, where I could, I could do all of school this way, I could do select classes this way. Do we, as a district, have a seat commitment that, that we're signing up for? I mean, if, if, you know, we blew the doors out and we had five hundred students or five hundred classes sign up, do we max out at some point? Or because this is all virtual, there's really no limitation on, on seating capacity, correct?
So that's an excellent question. There is a teacher assigned to every class. So class sizes are very much what we already have. So if we have, um, third grade class is twenty-five kids, then third grade is twenty-five students would be maxed out. If high school is thirty, we typically try to stay around that thirty then for a virtual classroom. You are still, as a teacher, providing feedback to those students, correcting all their work, connecting, monitoring their attendance, connecting with those parents. So it still is the same amount of students per class. And, um, so that didn't, doesn't change.
So in this near-term offering, class size limitation is dictated by the provider of, of the service?
Um, with, um, ti- yes. But they would not, so if we had a twenty-five limit in kindergarten, which is what we have, they wouldn't exceed that.
Okay. So we, we do have a cap that we're committed to. And let's say, so then, let's say in aggregate, we're talking a hundred seats. If we only have seventy-five seats occupied, we're paying for the other twenty-five?
Oh, no.
No.
We are paying per pupil.
Okay.
And per pupil, per class. So a student might sign up for a full course load, and another student might sign up for two courses. So we're only paying for what those, actually, students are actually enrolled in. And then it is based on the enrollment that we have, not on, and X. Like, we're not buying a hundred seats and paying for them no matter what.
Okay. So then, ju- jumping, sorry, Toni, one more question. Jumping to two years out. Why would we want to get into this business ourselves if we have somebody else out there providing the service to us? Does it, can we do it more cost-effectively? Does it give us more freedom in moving from a hundred seats to two-hundred-and-fifty seats? What's the advantage to me, the taxpayer?
So, um, it depends on which route we go. If, say, um, we have two vendors that we're considering right now. We could buy their curriculum and buy access to their platform and have our teacher administering the instruction. We save on the cost per child because we have the teacher and we're employing the teacher. So what we pay to them is reduced. And, um, once we purchase the curriculum, depending on which vendor we go with, it's then ours. So, uh, there are some advantages to that. The, um, consistent revisions that they do make it valuable to retain that partnership because we, currently, our tech department would be completely overwhelmed with trying to keep up with the revisions and things like that, um, to the curriculum, to the platform itself.
Are there any student minimums?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Paul, one of the limitations is going to be the class size nearly as much as the finance. For, if you have three hundred kids, you're going to pay for three hundred kids. If you have a hundred, you're going to pay for a hundred. And so if there's a maximum of thirty, and we have sixty, we can have two teachers, okay? Or they'll, they'll hire two teachers. But the key will, for us, will be, we haven't reduced any staff on this side, and you're adding a expense on this side, okay? And so, the finances are going to be more of a driving factor than anything to begin with. At some point in time, once you figure out if this is something we want to do, then if I only need six sections of algebra, because two sections of algebra are online, then I only need FTE to teach six sections. But for next year, we have the teachers already in place for eight sections, whether two sections are online or not. And so that really will be the limiting factor. And so when you, the other part is, when you figure out whether it's cheaper or not for us to do it, then you really have to sit down and, and question that as well. Because by the time you take a, a teacher and benefits and all the things that go with it, the cost per child for the curriculum goes up pretty significantly based on our person doing the instruction, rather than hiring somebody else to do the instruction, and we just help monitor it. So, so finances down the road really are going to drive part of this discussion.
So how, how customizable is the, would, would the curriculum be? So for instance, we just heard the great presentation about how we want to divide literacy into units, and we want to make it personal. I'm assuming that if we go with a vendor, we take their product. But could you, could you clarify that?
Yep. So we would be taking their product. And, um, let me use the example of a third-grade student. A third-grade student would start with the tier-one curriculum that's part of the virtual school. And then if the student is excelling in that, they would have a differentiated opportunity to still get the baseline instruction, but then at a, either a more rigorous pace or a more challenging concept. If that third-grade student was struggling and not, um, meeting the expectations, there's differentiation that would happen that would help them refine their basic skills that were needed.
So when you provide us additional information, I, you know, I like to see things by, by numbers. So if we currently have, let's say, seventy kids that we think in the district that would be involved in this program, and then we assume maybe there's a five percent increase every year or whatever. So when we get to the point of talking about a potential charter school, as you mentioned, and the dates involved, I'd really like to see some spreadsheets and kind of budgeted work information for us so that we can make informed decisions. I understand it's not all about the finances, but it is all about the finances in the end. So, you know, I'd really want to see maybe three different scenarios to show us, like, this is what we currently have. This would be a twenty percent increase, this would be a thirty percent increase, or whatever you feel would be appropriate. But, um, it would be critical for us to know, like, if we would have had this program this year, we think this is our number, seventy, eighty, whatever it is. And then, you know, going forward, what we would project that out to be. Thank you.
I think another data point that would be helpful for me on that, and timing is, is everything in terms of, of what I'm going to ask for. But on the heels of these last, this last semester, and I think, you know, students' eyes, parents' eyes have been opened in some cases in terms of, um, my student flourished in a way they haven't before. And, and I'm excited about this. I'd like to see a survey of maybe our, our incoming third through ninth graders. You know, given the timeframe that we're talking about, doing anybody past ninth grade probably is, is a bit moot because they're going to be gone by the time this would come around. But within that population, what kind of, of interest might we have? You know, dealing in, in the world of technology, Tim, we, we, you know, like to go out and build solutions that are looking for problems. But is, is there a market demand out here for this? And, and I, I like the idea of starting off with our toe in the water with, with a partner. And I'm not opposed to doing this, but again, the, the finance has got to make sense, given what we perceive the future to look like on that side.
Sorry, one more. You know, given the amount of time and energy that went into our former experience with a charter school, I'd like to be, um, I'm trying to choose my words carefully. I'd like to be over-informed, super-informed, so that we can make a very informed decision. I think one of the other things that would be critical, and I know we might be getting in the weeds here, but, you know, we assume, as Paul pointed out, that there are some students who flourished. But we also know that there are some students who did not flourish. And, um, I mean, will we get those type of numbers? I don't need to know that, you know, Johnny flunked English. But what I'd like to know is, you know, out of forty-two kids, or that would be a bad number, out of four hundred children, we had a ten percent increase in students who didn't pass because of our Corona situation. And, and what does that mean for the future? And how do we make sure that the program that we choose is adaptable for students? You know, we have some students who, like you said, flourish, and we have some that we know just did not do well. And I think our past charter school, unfortunately, that experience probably is, um, I don't know, it's burned in my head, is, some students went there for the wrong reasons, is what I'm trying to say nicely. You know, we, we had students who perhaps weren't looking for a charter experience as much as they were looking for a non-high school experience because they didn't feel they fit in, or, or whatever might have been going on there. So I just want to make sure that this is the right fit for the student, and it's not just a, hey, I got purple hair and people make fun of me, and so I'm going to take this class. But then, they're not going to flourish there. They're, they're going to suffer because they need that, you know, in-person interaction, so.
Other thoughts? This will come back as a discussion item at the next, at the next meeting, so.
Correct.
No action tonight, but.
No action tonight. And, um, I just want to point out, with the plan we have in place, we would not be looking at opening a charter in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And that would be delayed beyond that because we're not coming forward at this time with a proposal for that. We would continue with the partnership.
All right. Thank you, Laura, appreciate it. All right. Mr. Dave Ross with the, an update on the high school library. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Demolition on the library is nearly complete. They should be finishing up. If they didn't do it today, then it will be tomorrow. There are a lot of walls that came out in there, and when you go into that space now, it is. it is absolutely huge. It looked big before, but it looks gigantic now. Most importantly, I managed to get a swatch carpet for the superintendent because he wanted to take one with him.
The old carpet.
Oh, yeah, the blue carpet.
Only if it is a...
Oh, if I'd have known that you wanted one, I could still try. I could still try. We have been experiencing some interesting things in the supply chain. So we had, you know, we had designed skylights into the, into the project. When we had called a week or two ago, they were going to be six weeks out. Now they're going to be 14, but, you know, we'll still work around it. We'll be able to get the openings cut. We'll have to set them at a different time. But there have been some items that have been slowed down. Within the next week or so, we'll have a very formal project Gantt chart, so that we'll have a timeline put all together. Furniture is out for bid right now, so things are moving along pretty well, and we've got everybody on board, and things are, things are going well. Does anybody have any questions?
In general, August 21st is still a good date for occupancy?
That's what we're going for.
Well done.
Pushing right up till the end.
How fast are you going to be able to turn? Just because I purchased a lot of furniture recently, are you, so, I mean, bids are going out, how quickly are you going to flip on that and go ahead and order? Because you're going to need, especially now. My latest shipment's been delayed four times, so...
Something to look forward to.
Yes.
We may be starting out with some old furniture.
My point was, if you accept the bid, go early and go fast.
Right, and that's one of the qualifications I put in so that the vendors would be able to indicate whether they could get it by the timeline, so I can pick and choose between alternates.
Here, I got to just comment. Naming. I think we touched on this briefly last year. We're calling it still a library, which is great, people understand what that is. But I will make my pitch again for, can we name it something else? Innovation Center, Learning and Collaboration Center, 21st Century Center, or I thought about two of, asking one of the business classes and asking one of the students of who actually uses it to come up with a, with a name, if...
We can call it whatever you want. From now on, I will just refer to it as the large space that used to be the West Library.
Yeah, I was just going to say, how about the Rephold Center for a nice donation? We can get that done, I'll, like, I can help you with that tonight, actually.
All right, that is a good...
Have you been generally satisfied with the contractors that we're using?
Contractor has been great. I, I don't ever recall going on a construction site after the day is over and seeing a site that's been that clean. So they've been doing a really great job.
Other questions? Dave, thanks very much. Appreciate the update. All right. Laura, we have some first reading of several revised board policies. I think you're going to walk us through those.
Well, Tim will be up here to join me, certainly.
Right.
Policy 171, we have just a slight revision to that policy. This is with regard to public notice of board meetings. There's just an elimination of a portion of the policy here for first reading, and that is that because it's the way, the way that the policy currently reads, we must post it at all of our school sites. If there were a snowstorm and we weren't able to get it to all of the school sites, that we want to make sure that we're not limiting our ability to host a meeting because we weren't able to get to all the school sites for whatever reason. Or if someone forgot to post it at that site by 5:00 on the day and then went back and posted it, we will always post it on our website. We will meet the statute, it will be posted on the ESE always, and we will continue to post it at our school sites, but we're just recommending, policy committee agreed, to remove that section of the, to the policy.
And to be clear, we discussed in policy committee that this doesn't mean that we can't post at our individual schools, and I hope we still do, but it's no longer a dictated requirement.
I think we also discussed a policy that this is compliant with the statutes that do dictate when and how notices be posted.
Exactly.
Still got to change those call letters on 2B to definitely IVB.
Got that noted.
Good catch.
Thank you.
All right, so this is the first reading, so we will bring this up again next time, correct?
Yes.
All right. Which takes us to the next one, 521, Social Networking Technology. Good evening.
All right, good evening, board members. The first policy that I have in front of you tonight is a policy that is currently titled "Social Networking Policy." And really, it moves this policy in a line with what has changed in technology and includes the use of online systems. And so the policy language that you see in front of you is from WASB, as we try to align our policies with that different aspect of it. The largest change from our current policy to this one, besides the referencing of using approved online systems in the West Bend School District, is really pulling out some of the, what we would define as an administrative rule. Some of the process pieces of, I want to use this in my classroom. Upon approval of this entire policy, we would write an AR that would mirror some of the language that's currently in there, and outline the process of gaining approval for an online system, when I can use social media in the classroom, who I need to inform, you know, why does technology need access to it, all of those types of things. And so this really shortens that policy and brings it around the idea of that it's not just about Facebook and Twitter in the classroom, but it's all these other online systems that are available. And Paul, you said it well, that sometimes in technology, we like to find problems to solve, and so we can build a system for anything online. And so there's a lot of stuff out there. And so as we look at things like data privacy and cybersecurity over the last few years, last few years, saying, you know, these are the systems we're using, and you can't use that system, that would be part of that administrative rule, so.
Any questions on this one? All right, it'll come back for a second reading next time then, which takes us to 522.7, Staff Use of Information Technology and Communication Resources.
So this policy is kind of the overarching policy for all technology and communication work within the West Bend School District. It is almost an entire switch to the WASB language also, but yet very similar remnants of what was in our current policy. This just outlines the overall idea of that, you know, we use software, email, voicemail, you name it, all these different systems in the district. You know, things like open records laws applies. Privacy, you know, when you're using our network here is, you're not doing anything private. No different than if you go to a hotel and you click there a little accept and you go onto their Wi-Fi, the ability that, you know, they can see where and track where you're going. This is that overarching policy of all of those different pieces that go with it.
Questions on this one? All right, hearing none, it'll come back for a second reading. Thank you for your time. All right. So we're switching to action items, and Superintendent, it's time for a graduation update.
There we go. And this would like to be the final update so that we can plan our graduation. And so in May, we talked about July 12th and August 2nd as our graduation dates, and it's two Sundays. And as we worked with the kids, what we really want to do is, we want to make sure that we have a in-person graduation, if at all possible. We really want to do that, and we know that potentially we can have weather issues. And so what we are asking the board to do is to allow us to have graduation on July 11th, Saturday, with a makeup day on the 12th. And so we can do Saturday, and we plan to do it Saturday morning. It'll be west at 10:00 a.m., it'll be at the football field. The, we have everything in place, speaker systems, the program, everything will be, there will be limited seating, but everybody will have an opportunity for, all the students have an opportunity for at least two tickets, and then there'll be some additional tickets available if possible. We run it by the Police Department as well as the Health Department and have their blessings. And so it would be 11 o'clock, excuse me, 10 o'clock for west, 1:30 for east, okay, on Saturday. If it's on Sunday, then it would be a little bit later because we would, don't want to mess with church. And so Sunday is, that's 1:00 and 4:30. So if, if we have a rain issue on Saturday, we will do it on Sunday at 1:00 and 4:30, so that we're not interfering with church, okay? And we know that there may be a few people who had already planned some things for Saturday. I know there are receptions many different times of the day. We thought if we did it early enough, we wouldn't be interfering with receptions, and if we do, we apologize, but we think we have plenty of time for that to happen. As soon as we get the okay, we're going to send it out to parents tonight so that they can plan accordingly, and we'll send it out to the press tonight as well. And so typically, wouldn't necessarily bring it for board action, other than we had board action in May to set it on the 12th and the 2nd. We think it's appropriate to go with board action for the 11th with a makeup day on the 12th. And it'll be as traditional as we possibly can. There'll be speakers from east, speakers from west, there'll be student speakers as well as faculty speakers, issuing of diplomas, and as nice of a graduation as possibly can have. But we really want to get that information out to our parents tonight so that they can plan accordingly.
So just a couple comments. First, I'd like to, you know, say that this stinks for the kids, and I know it's not your fault, but I just felt the need to say that because it stinks. I applaud everyone who's been involved in trying to replan and regroup, and, you know, I understand this is very trying times. I know that our Health Department in Washington County works closely with, I think they're actually combined with the Ozaki County Health Department. And Cedarburg did something, and I had, a student had reached out to me, and I had forwarded this to Mr. Slash, but I will bring it up here. Cedarburg did a really nice parade of the students, and students could participate if they wanted to or if they didn't want to. Now, I'm not suggesting that we shut down Highway 45 or anything insane, but we already shut down Decorah for the homecoming parade. And if we're only going to allow two people per student, when we normally allow, I don't know, four or six, whatever the number is, I would once again ask the district if we couldn't look at allowing students who want to do a parade, set up a time. That way, if Grandma or neighbor Jody or whoever wants to come, they sit on the sidewalk on their own, they're outside, and our students can get a little more recognition. If we do it, you know, on a Friday afternoon for the homecoming event, which I love, by the way, you know, I would question if we couldn't consider doing something like this for the students. And, you know, maybe it's before the graduation, maybe it's after, maybe it's a different day. I'm sure that the chief is going to call me and yell at me after this suggestion, but I would really ask that, you know, we look at something like that. Cedarburg was able to pull it off. I don't see why West Bend couldn't. So that's my two cents.
Other thoughts? Observations, questions? Tony?
When would you want that to be?
I guess I would turn that back to the graduation committee. You know, there was, as I said, there was a student who had reached out to me, I could certainly find it in my email. He sent it to my school board email. So I just, I don't know, I mean, could it be done the same morning of? I don't know if that's going to, if it's Sunday, that could interfere with church sitting there, I get that. But maybe there's another afternoon time? I don't know, I just, I'm just trying to think of a unique way for the students to, you know, they've got their cap and gown on, they stroll down the street, at least neighbors could be on the sidewalks yelling out to them, like, congratulations, or, you know, they're siblings. I mean, at this point, we're not even allowing enough for siblings to come. This is just basically mom and dad. And if you're a split family, you're going to have to beg, borrow, and steal for extra tickets. You can't even get your stepparents there, so...
So you mean like a walking parade, not like car parade?
Well, if it's a car, if it's a car one, either which way. I mean, I don't, I don't care if it's car or walking, doesn't matter to me. I would leave that to the students to, you know, kind of coordinate and figure out. I just think it's an opportunity for the people who would normally attend something like this to give the students some extra u-r-a-ra and acknowledge, you know, their hard work for the last four years.
Well, if we could, I would recommend that you set the formal graduation date right now. We need to get that out to the public. We need to make sure that our parents who are here today can plan accordingly, and students can plan accordingly, and we get that out for Saturday with a makeup day on Sunday. If there's an opportunity, we can, the other will not necessarily be part of the formal graduation. There's almost no way it can be on Saturday because we're already, by the time we get people in and out of parking lots, and it's, they've put a lot of work into try to figure out how to get them in one side and out the other side, and all the cars. And so there will not be a parade on Saturday, not going to happen, okay? Maybe it could be Sunday afternoon, maybe it could be a different time, not saying that. But if we could set graduation tonight, and then I'll refer that over to Ralph and John and the graduation committee to see if there's something else they can do, and that's certainly an option as well, but let's, let's set graduation for sure.
Like, the parade would be a supplement?
Correct.
So, wild idea, and at the risk of it being perceived as a way of diminishing the meaning for the students, but given the July dates that we're talking about, I'm not sure what West Bend's plan is. But what if we did this in conjunction with the 4th of July parade? Put west and east as bookends around the marching band?
And I don't know if...
I think the city council's actually voting on that right now.
And I believe that there's not, they're going to do fireworks, from what I understand, but that's going to be where they typically, I don't know if there's a parade, I don't, I don't have a clue on a parade.
Yeah.
Something to look at.
If there is...
They're voting tonight about fireworks.
Yeah.
We don't know yet what the outcome is.
Well, I don't mind your wild idea. I guess we, you throw that back to the kids, right? I mean, I know there's maybe the chance that more...
Road shut down and a lot of people out there, so...
I move to set the east and west high school graduation for July 11th with a backup date of July 12th. Second that.
Motion in second to set graduation for July 11th, which is a Saturday, with a backup date of July 12th, which is a Sunday. Any final discussion?
Maybe I will just say final discussion on the split families because one of them approached me already. We had no idea actually till tonight, the final recommendation was two, two tickets. I know some people won't attend, potentially, their, their child may be at another conflict, so I would just say for the split families, it's a big area. We can social distance. I know you're pushing the limit with the police chief and the health network, but let's push them a little bit more. It's a big area, and try to get as many people there as possible.
So right now, the letter that'll go out says that, "For extra tickets, please contact the high school office prior to June 25th. Extra tickets may be available but are not guaranteed by lottery for two household families." There is limited seating due to Health Department guidelines. So we're going to try to do everything we can, but for the most part, it really is for that, that, those split parents, so that, you know, you got a stepmother, a stepdad. Not necessarily for little brothers and sisters. It really is designed to provide everybody who really needs to be at the graduation a graduation, and we'll do everything we can to accommodate as many of those as we possibly can. Because we know that not everybody's going to come for graduation. There's some that are already gone, some of them say, you know what, I got my diploma, this is fine, and others will want to have four people there.
Is this also live broadcast?
Yes.
So on cable, so someone could be at home watching?
Somebody can be home watching, and will be broadcast.
I'm pretty sure I asked this last time, but there is no requirement that you show up for this graduation ceremony to achieve your diploma, correct?
Absolutely not. So diplomas, as soon as all the grades are done, the transcripts are signed, and the diploma itself, even though it's nice to have, the diploma doesn't really get you anywhere. The transcript is what gets you into college. The transcript is what you get your first job with, or whatever it might be. So there is no requirement to be there.
I don't think this is going to happen, but if it does, I'd like to make a request to the president that if the governor happens to extend some sort of a stay-at-home, safer-at-home order as it relates to public schools, which is still in effect as we speak for public schools till the end of June, then I would request that we revisit this vote, okay?
That makes sense.
Don't think it's going to happen.
Nope.
But...
Right.
I don't want to help, be held personally responsible for holding a graduation ceremony if the governor puts an order in place that says not to.
Well, and I guess I would ask on the flip side, if all of a sudden July 6 rolls around and they say, hey, we can do mass gatherings of up to 400, or 500, or whatever that number may be, that we then would look at loosening up the ticket number on the, on the flip side of that.
And I think the way I look at that, Nancy, is that's up to the graduation committee, and the principals, we don't set the limit. The board is not tonight setting the limit of...
Agreed, agreed. I'm just saying that if that's the flip side, I'd like to see that happen. I'm just making a remark.
Yep, that's fine.
But Nancy, we're already at 7:50. But Nancy, we're already at 7:50 at the meeting. So if you look at 280 kids at West, and let's say you have 250 that graduate or want to be part of it, and they each have two people, not three or four, that's 500 plus 250 plus teachers plus. So you're, you're going to be pushing 7, 800 people already in attendance. I'm not saying that maybe you push it to 1,000, but, but that 500 is there for both east and west at this point in time.
Get it. I'm just saying that I have a feeling you're going to see some of these numbers change after the Fourth of July. So, you know, if that happens.
Changes for the better, great.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right, that's a fair point. All right. We had a motion and a second, so I will call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Great, the motion carries. Thanks for everyone's work on, work on that item. All right. And so let's see, the next action item is approval of word study K through 6 instructional resource. Laura and Heidi.
Yep. Word study is an essential part of our comprehensive literacy approach and very, very important part of the instructional process and learning to read and reading to learn. Our, our staff had focused on looking at some word study resources. We originally intended to come here before the board to seek approval in March. However, we sought a little more input from staff on the resource that we were selecting. And so staff have had some time to look at that. When I let principals know that we were not coming to the board for approval of the primary resource, they, I will say, they were very disappointed in that. So very glad, they were very glad to hear. I connected with each one of them. Very glad to hear that we were moving forward with the process today. And so Heidi is here, as well as Jerry Kratlow, Kirsten, Kathleen, and Adrian are also here to talk a little bit more about the word study program. Very essential to the learning to read. Think of that really understanding how to make, how to make words. Part of the process that you will see is really pulling us together as a system. So we're using, using the same resource and moving in the same direction with our students and our staff.
So word study, just to give you a little background about what word study is. Oops, sorry.
It's Sarah's here, not Kathleen. I apologize.
So when we think about word study, you kind of traditionally think about that to be synonymous with spelling and a little bit of a difference there, but just to kind of highlight some of those key areas, that word study is really looking at that phonemic awareness. So when you're in the K-1 grade levels, your ability to hear the sounds in words, because you always have to be able to hear them before you can read them or write them. Then moving into that phonics piece, which is applying it to reading and writing, being able to automatically recognize words. So maybe you're used to seeing students have like high-frequency word lists or things where they're kind of knowing some words automatically. And then also then knowing those morphology pieces. So knowing things like Latin roots and stems and things like that to help them read. So those are kind of the pieces that word study is encapsulating here when we talk about it, so that you have a frame. So we know that word study, to be effective, has to have explicit phonics instruction that addresses skills, follows a continuum of skill complexity, and includes a review and repetition cycle that leads to mastery. It can't just be a one and done. It can't be that this first grade classroom gets this and this classroom gets that. It has to be a whole system-wide approach in order for it to work and for students to progress through the sequences. So when we think about how does word study impact your overall literacy development? Really, word study is kind of that foundational piece. You have to have those, that phonics instruction, that explicit instruction to be able to read words. If you don't, you can't decode them. You can't figure them out on pages of a text yourself, which means that then you can't automatically begin to, to read the words. I'm sure now you could read a document very fluently. You don't need to stop and think about how to break apart that word, except for the pop quiz word that Tony can pronounce very well and I cannot. So there, you can, you just have that automaticity in your word recognition, which leads to then your fluency, which is how quickly you can read and string sentences and words together to make meaning out of, which is your comprehension. So you'll see that if we have a breakdown in that very first piece there, in that phonics piece, we have a great divide moving kids forward. And they can't, they can't progress in that literacy progression. So what does the current research say about word study instruction? We know that it has to be systematic and it has to be equitable. We know that there has to be a lot more word study emphasis placed on word study in the early elementary years versus the later years. That is super key. We have to talk about that as alphabetic principle, and we need to create all of the different opportunities that go into that. So sound by sound, looking at larger chunks, all of those things so that we're leading to more meaningful reading experiences. All of this needs to be done within the context of transfer. If kids cannot take what they learn here and transfer it into their reading or transfer it into their spelling, we're not doing our job effectively and we don't have the right resource in place. So that kind of leads us to where we are right now. Previously, we had some places or some programs in place throughout our system that didn't lead to transfer. Maybe you've seen things like word sorts or things like that, where kids have like, here's the word cat and here's the word kit. And students just had words with As and Is in them, and they could just sort visually what those were without needing to read the words. And they could do that very easily and look like they were proficient in, in their word study application, but weren't necessarily able to take that and apply it across. Our teachers realized that, and so they all started looking for what's out there that we can support kids with, which was amazing. They were being responsive to the kids that were in front of them, but it's led, led us to be a little bit divided in what are all of the kids getting? And they're not necessarily getting something that's cohesive at a K-6 level any longer because of that. So our plan for adoption is to look at the Fountas and Pennell Classroom Phonics and Word Study Kit. This is a K-6 kit. It is systematic in its progression. It's based on nine core principles. Teachers would be provided with some professional development, not only in how to implement the kit, but also in best practices and the research behind effective word study instruction. So they know the why of what they're doing and not just the how or the what in checking it off, but making sure that we're really going deep in that. We're also making sure that we can be a little flexible with our implementation timeline based upon what our school experience looks like in fall. We would hope to roll this out at day one of fall, but if we're still virtual or if there are things that impact that, we would be responsive to those things at that time and kind of have a Plan B, C, D, whatever we need to have based upon how quickly things are changing right now with things that are out of our control. So based upon all that, I have some teachers here with me that Laura spoke to. They're going to give you a little bit based upon their perspective, why they feel like this would be a great thing for our system. So I'll start with Kristin Krasinski, who is a kindergarten teacher at Decora. Oops, sorry.
Hi, I'm Kristin from Decora, and I teach kindergarten. And as a kindergarten teacher, it's really important that I teach the foundational skills, but that I also have a clearly defined sequence to use, and this resource really has that. This resource is systematic, and so it will help us ensure to be consistent across grade levels, but then also across schools, which is really important and something we're lacking right now. And the lessons are quick and efficient, and they're designed for whole group instruction, but they're easily transferable to small groups so that we can differentiate for students that are above or below their grade level.
Hi, I'm Jerry Kratlow from Green Tree School. And before I begin talking about word study, I'd like to thank the, the board and also the district for the wonderful signs in our yards. We are very thoughtful, that was very thoughtful. Now word study. When you think of word study, word study should not be thought in isolation. It should be thought as, yes, it is building a strong reader, but not only a strong reader, but a strong writer and a strong speaker. And as she mentioned, Kristin mentioned, is it will give us a scope and sequence. So for example, being a second grade teacher, I would be able to study the scope and sequence of what will be coming to me. So I would look at that and see that this second grade student will have received three of the nine essential areas in the word study, and it gives me a baseline where to begin the instruction instead of wasting time on where to begin. So that's what word study does. Also, I know at West Bend schools, we want high-quality instruction. And I feel that I'm also a model classroom for the second grade and studying the PCL framework and studying this word study program, I think they'll work very well together. And so I believe in, the West Bend district believes in high-quality instruction. I believe this word study would provide that for our students.
And I'm Sarah Rapp. I'm a third grade teacher at Jackson. I also think that this would be a smart program in, in regards to kind of what was spoken here about the scope and sequence piece. Like when, when third graders, when they're coming in, I'll know exactly what they would have had. If someone isn't on track, I'd be able to kind of look back to see where their gaps are and be able to use resources from previous levels to help fill that in as opposed to, right now, it really is a lot of just me finding things, but not having the research behind the exact progression of it all. And so having a program that has that already for us, I think, would be really beneficial in knowing that foundation skills with literacy is essential. You know, especially again, thinking at third grade, they start really having carryover. It's not just memorized spelling words. It's meant to be critical thinkers and analyzing what the meaning of words would be for their writing and their reading. And so I think it again would be, provide a really great resource for our students and for us to provide better instruction, so.
Give me again. So from my level as a principal, and also I'm the third grade principal rep for the, for our system, and I had been second grade for a number of years. And that is one of the things that has really been a struggle for us over the years is that word study component and the different ways that it has been taught across our system and the grade levels and the schools, even within the school. The principals did an informal check with their teachers in May of talking about what you've been using for word study and how do you determine what you're using? And we were really, I don't want to say we were shocked because I think we kind of knew what we were going to get as a response when we asked the question, but we were alarmed with the variances of all of that. And the impact that that then has on our students who are transient within our system. And then as they all go into Silverbrook as fifth graders, we want to make sure that they have a nice, solid foundation. Heidi spoke to it earlier where she said the teachers really were being very responsive to their students when we had a defined system that we were using, but they were finding it wasn't meeting their needs. So everybody kind of started just branching off with best intentions, with the resources they had available to them. So nothing was done with ill intent or without talking with their colleagues or with, you know, what was going to work for my students. But it did create a system of a lot of inconsistencies across. And so Laura was right when she said the principals were disappointed initially when told that this was not going to go through because as I see it in 18 classrooms in my building, in multiple ways being instructed, it is not to the, the betterment for the student long-term. So we are excited about this word study program, and we really look forward to the development that it will bring to our teachers. And to Jerry's point before, the integration with the PCL model that you've been hearing about this year as well is, I think, a really nice fit. So, thank you.
So given all of this, are there any questions about?
Tell me about the timeline again for implementation.
Yeah, so the goal would be pending upon tonight's decision. We'd order the kits this summer. We would look to get them in teachers' hands this summer if they would so choose. Otherwise, they would get them when they return in August. If we have a typical start to the school year, we would look to start implementing at the beginning of the school year with training happening at that point. If we do not have a typical start to the school year, we would have to just kind of adjust based upon that. You know, if we're full virtual, maybe we're trying to fully implement. If we are back and forth, it just, I think we need to see what all of the pieces are that are on the plate and not make a too premature decision. But the goal would be if we are in a typical place, to start at the beginning of the school year.
Great. There's four pages of teacher comments on here, which is wonderful. And I typically read all the comments, and there are a handful who are saying, we feel overwhelmed, we've already got new social studies, new language workshops, new SEL lessons, COVID, a lot of things. So is now the right time? And so I, I think your answer is spot on. If it, the fall rolls around and it's not feeling like it's the right time, we don't want to overwhelm people.
Right. And with that, we've realigned the ELA units of study timeline to not be the beginning of the year, to be responsive of that, so that we have some time to do word study first, then at semester, bring something new on. So we're not trying to do four or five things all at once. So that's the plan. And like we said, we always sometimes have to be flexible with that plan depending upon what happens, so.
Given that this is K-6, and maybe it's just a function of not having representation here in the room today, but I can imagine, and Adrian, your, your point of, you know, what is Silverbrook encountering when they've got this mishmash of best intentions coming in? They've been involved in this, they're excited about getting some harmony there and grafting into the same track?
Yeah, so their biggest thing is as part of our multiple, multi-tiered systems of support, so our MTSS systems, we are noticing that a lot of students are needing interventions at that middle school level for what we call basic reading, which is things like decoding. So they are excited about the fact that kids will be able to have a equal base level of support at that level. They, unfortunately, the one downfall to Silverbrook is the kits at five and six are in publication, and they are due out this August. So we were only able to give them the sampler materials to look over versus purchasing a kit for them to actually look at. So their viewing experience was slightly different than K-4 for a reason that was outside of our control.
Heidi, you don't even talk about virtual in the fall. So that's, that's a non-play, it's gone. So we're going to be back face-to-face in the fall.
Okay, perfect.
Heidi, I really appreciate that you surveyed all the teachers and were transparent with the feedback that they gave. So therefore, I move to approve the purchase of, I do not know how to pronounce this word, Fountas and Pennell Classroom Phonics and Word Study Resource as the primary resource for word study and literacy instruction for K through 6th grade.
Great, we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of this resource. Any final discussion?
I'd just like to thank the teachers for coming today and bringing your insight. It helped with, with at least presentation and educations. And thank you for what you do, bringing innovation to the young students we have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any oppose? The motion carries. Thanks very much. All right, we are next talking about sec, several revised board policies. And we have several here on second reading. So I will remind the board that because this is a second reading, according to Board Policy 151, we are able to approve them with unanimous consent. Alternatively, we could move to reject them, or we could do nothing, in which case they would go to a third reading. So with that in mind, we'll tick through these. So Laura, if you want to go ahead with the, let's see, the first one, which is 361.1 Selection of Resources.
So are there any additional questions from the board on the second reading of the selection of resources? Are there any additional questions on accept, student acceptable use? How about student access to networked information? Any additional questions on the co-curriculars?
I do. I know the policy meetings are public, but I know that they're not well-attended or videoed for.
They actually are videoed.
They are.
The video is posted to the website.
Oh, good, okay. Well, just as a, I guess, to bring everyone up to speed who might be paying attention or to reiterate whatever points that were made, could, could we discuss the addition of the, the language that's not required by DPI?
I can take that. So if you take a look at the last paragraph, which one of our community members brought up today, "The district shall not unlawfully discriminate in addition, in admission to or participation in any program or activity standards and rules of behavior," you can, you can read on. Wisconsin State Statute 118.13, which is referenced at the bottom of the policy, is titled "Pupil Discrimination Prohibited." And no person may be denied admission to any public school or be denied participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be discriminated against in any curricular, extracurricular, people service, pupil services, recreational, or other program or activity because of the person's sex, race, religion, national origin, ancestry, creed, pregnancy, marital, parental status, sexual orientation, physical, mental, emotional, or learning disability. So that is in state statute, and it's referenced at the bottom of our policy. Also, Wisconsin Policy 9.03, which talks about how boards shall develop policies prohibiting discrimination against pupils. The policies shall include the following areas, which include admission to schools, class, programs, and activities. You cannot. You cannot prohibit discrimination based on what was referenced in the statute that I just read. And that also includes facilities. This does not prohibit separate locker rooms, showers, and toilets for males and females, but the separate facilities must be comparable, which we do. We have both men's and women's locker rooms that are both comparable in their amenities, which at the high school are not great to begin with. Opportunity for participation in athletic programs or activities. This does not prohibit separate programs for interscholastic athletics for males and females, but the programs shall be comparable in type, scope, and support from the school district. So that policy and the state statute that I just read, if you want to go back and read that last paragraph, it's, it's state statute. It is state statute. So if we don't want to have that paragraph in our school board policy, I don't really care. It really doesn't matter because state statute says you cannot unlawfully discriminate against what is stated in that policy. So up to, up to the group, but I mean, that's why it's in the WASBEE policy. That's why it's referenced in, in the bottom of our policy. It's, it's state law.
And to take that a step further, I think the, the primary concern that was voiced was pertaining to extracurriculars and the locker room situation. And there is a WIAA transgender participation policy that they published in 2018. And similar verbiage in terms of areas of awareness for schools, ensure gender-appropriate, equitable locker room and restroom accessibility. So, you know, it's, it's there, there, they, they've put a framework in place and we would comply.
And Paul, that's a great point. It's brought up in our policy in paragraph three that talks about where applicable, these rules and regulations shall be consistent with any rules of eligibility and conduct required by state or other associations, for example, the WIAA. So it's even in our policy, what you just referenced, the WIAA put out a handful of years ago, so.
So while I, I personally respect the comments that were, that were raised and the concerns, my personal belief on, on this issue is overridden by state statute at, at the state level. So I, I will be supporting this, this adjustment.
So realistically, if we wouldn't have this policy, we could have someone legally challenge us because of WIAA or the state statute, correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm comfortable with the statement in that it begins, "The district shall not unlawfully discriminate." And I'm trying to imagine a situation where we would want to say we do want to lawfully discriminate. So I think it's, I think that's an important factor here as to why I'd be comfortable with it. I also respect the comments here. I think the one, the, the item that we do need to keep in mind is, you know, as a, as a public school, there's that, there's that fine line between what we may want personally, but also what we owe to the community and more so to keep ourselves out of some legal trouble. So that's one of the reasons why I'm, I'm supportive of the language, but would be happy to hear from other, others on the board as well.
If not, I can make a motion here. I move to approve revised board policies. I'm going to do them separate, just in case the vote changes. I move to approve revised board policy 361.1 Selection of Resources.
Second.
Motion and second to approve revised board policy 361.1 Selection of Resources. Final comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to approve revised board policy 363.2 Student Acceptable Use Policy.
Second.
Motion and second to approve revised board policy 363.2 Student Acceptable Use. Any final comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to approve revised board policy 363.3 Student Access to Networked Information Resources.
Second.
Motion and second to approve revised board policy 363.3 Student Access to Networked Information Resources. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to approve revised board policy 370 Co-Curricular Activities and Exhibits A, B, and C that go along with the policy.
Second.
Motion and second to approve revised board policy 370 Co-Curricular Activities with Exhibits A, B, and C. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. That takes us to Mr. Hanson. We have proposed new policy, 536.6 Reduction in Force.
Members of the board, thank you for having me again tonight. This is a reduction in force for support staff policy. As you recall from our previous discussions, we adopted a reduction in force policy for contracted staff earlier in the winter. And as we've talked about at previous meetings and the policy meeting, really the, the key to this policy is found in Part C, which is really the sequence of steps that the district would use if it were to need to engage in a reduction in force for support staff policy, or for support staff. And that Section C kind of talks about the sequential order that the district goes in to make those, you know, unfortunate selections if that ever needs to be the case. As I said last time, I really feel that this policy provides benefit both for employees and for the district. For employees, it makes it very clear that the district follows a very standard, repeatable process if we have to engage in a reduction in the workforce. And I think that's, that's positive for employees, that they, they understand that going in. For the district, it provides some litigation protection if someone were to accuse a district of engaging in a reduction force in a discriminatory manner, because the district can go back and point to the specific steps here that it fouled when engaging in those reductions. So I'll answer any questions. Otherwise, this is a second reading, so if it is unanimous, it would become policy of the district.
Any questions, comments?
I'll move to approve new board policy 536.6.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the adoption of policy 536.6 Reduction in Force Support Staff. Any final discussion?
I appreciate that you're getting ahead of us and we're not reacting down the road. So thank you.
We haven't had to do this before. You know, it's one of those things you like to avoid and in a declining enrollment environment, it's something you want to be mindful of, but hopefully we are planning ahead and not necessarily over-hiring that this would have to be used, if at all, in a very sparing manner.
That's great. Nice work.
Yes, thank you. All right, I will call the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's see, that takes us to, Laura, we have some deletions. Or one deletion.
Just one deletion this time around. So the policy 371 was all of these things combined, organizations, social events, and about having a student handbook. Were there any questions at this second reading of the potential deletion of this policy?
I'll move to approve the deletion of board policy 371 Organizations, Social Events, Handbook Student, Student, Handbook Student Information.
I'll second that. Motion and second to approve the deletion. Any final discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to switch gears to budget. And Mr. Sarno is going to talk us through 2019, 2020 budget adjustments and then a preliminary budget to follow.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Kirkagard. Thank you so much for the opportunity tonight. I do, it, it is hard. We have two, two, two agenda items in front of us tonight and it's hard because there is a date where it changes from the current fiscal year, the clock strikes midnight, we go into the next year. But a lot of the information that we're talking about tonight is, is married together a little bit because one year impacts the other and what we're doing and what, what, what's been the impact of COVID-19 and our, and our shutdown. So I'm going to be sharing a little bit of information that, information was, that was attached in the board packet. But additionally, I, I would like to share a little bit of a supplemental, kind of a Finance 101. And I have to admit, I don't know if it's new information to you or if you've had this discussion before. It is not a new topic to the district because I'm just real quickly, we have Fund 41 and Fund 46, and they actually serve two different purposes. They're both for facilities, capital improvements, but one is for more property-rich districts. That was originally Fund 41 and then Fund 46 was created. And I know we were a key piece of that legislation to get that implemented, but that's for more corporate, property-porer districts. Well, we have both, which is fairly rare, but oddly enough, it does serve to our advantage to have both. I'll be talking a little bit about that today because we want to know where our money is coming from and the decisions that we're making tonight actually impact next year and the levy and the mill rate and some of those things. So real quick, and I will take my time, I'll make sure I give it its due diligence. But I did want to share just a little bit of information and this should be a familiar document. I've been bringing this forward at the quarterly updates as well as the, the initial budget. This is the amendment to the 2019-20 budget. And as you can imagine, we did not spend at the same level as what we originally thought when the final budget was passed back in October. Things happened and for that matter, we didn't spend a fair amount because things didn't happen strategically. We were being cautious and that's kind of what we do, human nature. But I've got this broken down, all the green, I'll start out at the beginning. Yellow is fund balance, beginning and ending balance for any funds that have that availability. Green are revenues, kind of that orangey salmon color are expenditures, and then I've got that total. And what this does is it breaks down the original October approved budget, the final budget, what a recommended amendment is for your approval this evening and then that variance from October until, October until now. But I hope you guys can see that okay. But all in all, as we look, there, the total expenditures, and I, and I will go into some detail on this, we had about $2 million of, of monies that were not spent throughout the year as compared to what we believed we would have incurred back in October. Revenues stayed fairly close. There's a couple very little variations, primarily grant-driven, $1,500 local revenue, which I think we didn't collect some spring sports, gate receipts, minimal things like that. Like I said, addition of a grant throughout the year that we just utilized a little bit differently. The big variance that we have is in expenditures with our general fund. And again, this is broken down by page and groupings, but salaries we had decreased by about $526,000. And again, we paid everybody throughout the year, but additionally, there were some things that just didn't happen, some staff development opportunities, some things we probably overshot in some areas because we had some vacancies throughout the year that we didn't fill. So we had a decrease of about $526,000 in salaries. Benefits, we actually saw a little bit of a decrease. Why did that happen? People get married, they have children, the family plans change and whatnot. So we actually did have a small, a small increase in our benefits within our general fund. Purchased services was a large decrease for the current year from October until now, $1.3 million. Staff development didn't happen. We did meet our obligation with Johnson Bus, our transportation carrier. We paid them 60% of the normal typical routes. That's the morning, noon, and afternoon routes, but we didn't have the co-curricular trips this spring. We didn't have things like that. So there's several hundred thousand dollars that, expenses that we just, we're not obligated to pay. We, I have another list. Open enrollment out actually decreased by about $100,000 from October until now, students that just did, we, we were not obligated to pay that expense to other districts. We actually had college credits. There's about $100,000 decrease within, again, that's considered a purchased service, but we did not have those expenses this spring as we originally planned. We did shift over from, you'll see a slight increase in equipment. It's a coding thing where we, we buy a service, which is the construction company, but then there's the equipment component. And so we actually shifted some over from a purchased service to the equipment where it landed. But all in all, purchased services decreased of about $1.3 million. Consumables, again, we, we put in a fairly hard spending freeze this spring and a lot of the things that as we're wrapping up and approaching April 15th, when our normal spending should be ending, we just didn't, we didn't have that as we would have in a typical year. So there's a lot of supplies, a lot of things like that. We operated, just not some other recurring expenditures that would have happened at year end. As I've mentioned, equipment, there's a slight increase, $131,000. Mr. Harder with technology met the students' needs. We purchased some devices that we could get our hands on to get to, into kids' hands. So we did have that obligation, slight increase with our larger items. The, the piece, one of the, one of the big components that I'm going to be talking about, and you'll see this down in some of our debt service funds and our capital improvement funds, the inter-fund activity, 1.8, almost a $1.9 million increase. Why is that? I'm trying to maximize, again, and I'll show a graph here in just a moment, but whatever we don't spend this year, our aid is based on that for next year, and I'll, I'll give a little bit more detail. So all in all, when we think about the minimal revenue changes, we originally had about a $2 million decrease in our expenditures that we just didn't incur. I'm only showing a variation of about $335,000. $335,000. I actually increased our inter-fund transfer. What I'd recommend is that we transfer that money over into our debt service, excuse me, into our capital improvement funds. That's acknowledged as an expenditure because when we calculate our aid next year, if we don't spend that money, and I got to tell you, I, I, I don't think it'd be the worst idea to leave that money in fund balance, leave it in the general fund. But when we don't incur that expense, half of it will be seen as the state is, they don't need it, and our state aid is going to be decreased by about 50% or $1 million next year. So really what this is, and I called the DPI, I called a couple colleagues, I called Brian Brewer at Baird, I said, is this a smart technique? Again, Fund 41 and Fund 46, you're going to see a transfer into Fund 46, and we're going to be able to utilize that then to maintain our state categorically aid next year. So it's a, it's a really a smart technique. It gives us flexibility then next year if something happens at the state level, if there's legislation in the fall that says you can't have as much as we originally promised in the biennial budget. It gives us then some flexibility to shift some money back into the general fund and meet our obligations. So I'll explain that in just a little bit more. We did have above and beyond, and I'm going to go down and I apologize for the empty page there, Fund 21 now. And again, these are points, I have some notes in each one of these bracketed fund areas. Fund 21 are primarily our student activity accounts, but we did have a large revenue increase. I indicated that the education foundation paid off the art center, Silver Lining Art Center. So that's why we did have that large increase in the revenue. And then I think the typical activity for students on that expenditure side is about that $250,000 to $300,000 expenses. So they're self-sustaining now, their fund balance is back into the positive, that's a good thing. Fund 27, we did have, and I noted there is increases in revenue because that's another transfer that we needed to make. Fund 27, our special education, has to be self-sustaining to the penny. We reconciled that at year end, but as we ended up gathering all those services, we had a lot of benefit increases in our Fund 27 this year with staff transferring over to family plans and whatnot. But that's all reconciled, but it was about a $600,000 increase in expenditures. We needed that revenue to follow behind it. Again, that was a transfer from 10 into 27 to help reconcile it. But that, that fund is now in line and I looked historically at a slight increase every year. We did dip back in October. This brings us back in line with kind of a slight increase that would you typically see for expenditures for all these services that we're providing to this demographic. Fund 29 is our head start, very minimal increase, excuse me, decrease. It was just a grant allocation change that we'd made based on their spending plan for the current year, but again, a little over $1.2 million. Again, that's an allocation we're given by the federal government for county-wide services with head start. Fund 38, no change at all. Again, this is our non-referendum debt, so this is where the board has entered into debt by your own accord. We're repaying that for a few years out, but no change from October. With Fund 39, which is the referendum debt, no change from October until now. Those are just debt schedules, they are what they are. Keep in mind with Fund 39, we are defusing some debt, so it was about $2.2 million of debt that we defeased for the current year. I'll talk about that again next year with, with the next agenda item, but no changes with our debt services.
And Andy, on Fund 39, that, that defeasance, that is what that fund balance represents?
Exactly. Yep, thank you. Some of our capital project funds, we have Fund 41. This is where I've indicated we, we may wish to transfer the money out, all the expenditures. We, we've still made a transfer of revenue into Fund 41, but I've actually made a recommendation to pull out about $1.3 million, $1.2 million out of Fund 41 as an expenditure. That's why in that orange on the top, you're going to see a large decrease from October until now. to see a large decrease from October until now. Let's transfer that money out, and then you're going to see that down below in Fund Forty-Six is a new budgeted expenditure. So there's a large uh increase there. We need to acknowledge the expenditure in Fund Forty-Six. When you, when you expense it in the year, it's acknowledged the uh the the next year. Fund Forty-One, coincidentally, actually averages out and dates back to the nineties when we started using Fund Forty-One, and that expenditure isn't acknowledged in the same way. So we need to make sure that we're showing an expenditure, which is why I'm transferring it from Fund Forty-One to Fund Forty-Six. It's a little bit of a shell game, but it's going to accomplish our goal in protecting our category, or excuse me, our general state aid for next year. Okay?
And putting it into Forty-Six doesn't lock it up for the five-year limitation before you can touch it?
Nope, the five-year, we hit that this last July, and we have access to spend every single penny whenever we want. There's not a new five-year for any new money deposited into that, so we have, we have access to that money immediately. Okay? So again, we very little activity back in October for Fund Forty-Six. It was just going to be the interest income. Now I'm recommending that that's where we would actually expense the large majority of what Mr. Ross and his team have been working on last summer, and as we're wrapping up right now, I'm actually coding some of the library funds and whatnot. We'll fully drain the current year's allocation down to zero. Still the fund balance that exists in both of those funds, just a little bit of a shift in in needing that flexibility to acknowledge that. Fund Forty-Nine, that's the Barton Sale, uh four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars uh from the sale of that property. No change from October. Again, we could, and you'll actually see where I might recommend, that at next year, we consider using some of those funds, depending on what the state says with revenue limits and whatnot. Uh but for the current year, no change. Fund Fifty, and again, if I go back to the general fund with that inter-fund transfer, um we made a a decision, you guys made a decision. I'll put the ownership on you, uh very supportive of administration. Um we said we're going to continue to pay all staff, including Fund Fifty, which is nutrition. They're their own little enterprise. They're a business, um and they're self-sustaining. They have a fund balance, um not too terribly large, a little over two hundred thousand dollars. They've not been able to operate in the same manner that they traditionally have. So I've actually identified a new line item, um it two hundred thousand dollars, a transfer from the general fund over to Fund Fifty, which is our nutrition, to help give them that bump that they need to keep paying the staff through the rest of this year. They need that bump. Otherwise, we're going to bring, be bringing their fund balance down to about zero. Um and what happens is when they go to zero and they go into the negative is we have to start contributing money to bring them back to zero every year. Let's keep their fund balance hap- happy and healthy. Um we have that flexibility this year to be able to do that. Um so I I would recommend that as well. I want to be fully transparent about that. Um they are providing today, I think the numbers are down just a little bit. I think they're right around six hundred um students that were addressed, which is six thousand meals that they provided. Um we've been hovering anywhere from a thousand. Today was the lowest, but a lot of neighboring area districts are going to stop their meal production today, their deployment. And so it's possible we could see another little bit of an uptick if some neighboring families come to us, which is allowable. Abby's ready for that if it's needed. We would get that federal reimbursement for that, so um just a little bit of a heads up on that. I did uh make sure in Fund Fifty, I also adjusted for any of the, again, minimal salaries and benefit adjustments and whatnot. Um the real big piece is some of those food purchases and whatnot. We've been giving out fairly expensive food. It's a lot less volume, but the prepackaged, the things that can be frozen that have shelf life, they've been a little bit more expensive. So that's where we see only a little bit of a um adjustment to some of those areas. Fund Seventy-Three, which is our other post-employment benefit trust, no uh plan change from uh October with the original budget, still planning on contributing about one and a quarter million dollars from the general fund in. We've been collecting money from retirees. The investments have been doing okay. Um but I think uh from the, from now until year end, which we're in June, but the last couple of months have been sliding down with our interest income. Next year is going to be pretty tight with interest. Uh we're very, very low interest rates uh with the return. Um so I'm planning on that. Um but this year, they did perform fairly well. Fund Eighty, which is our community service fund, we did originally plan on spending about sixty thousand dollars of the fund balance. Uh it's kind of a three-year spending plan um that we have with that two hundred thousand dollar fund balance. Um but we did uh continue our contract with the police department for our school resource officers. Um a lot of the salaries and benefits, this is the pool workers, um which I have to admit was not captured in the original budget, um but a lot of the pool workers, uh the lifeguards and whatnot that were uh um there. So we did make that change, which was an increase in the salary and benefit area, um balanced out by a decrease in some purchase services for the year and whatnot. But uh Fund Eighty is literally within a few, a couple hundred dollars of what we originally projected. And then last of all, uh Fund Ninety-Nine, we're the fiscal agent for the girls' hockey with the cooperative, and uh they originally planned on about a hundred and four thousand dollars of activity. Um I am happy to report, right, right as I was finalizing this report, we reconciled, I think, expenditures for that program. It's right around eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars. Right around that. So um this will actually be a little bit less. That means less for us, less for all the participating school districts. Um but that, yeah, um yeah, yeah. Um so that that's Fund Ninety-Nine uh with with our hockey cooperative that we're the fiscal agent. I think the boys is with Cedarburgs, so that wouldn't be in Fund Ninety-Nine. There we go. Thank you. Yeah, I'll get it right one of these days. Um but um this is the recommendation at this point in time. I'd certainly entertain any other questions or comments.
I got just a question. If I have to explain this in plain speak, if we get a question, so, but it seems like we have two million dollars in expense savings, which is a significant amount. I know some was COVID-related at the end, but that's a great accomplishment. We had a couple hundred thousand of I of increases. A lot of that was dealing with technology, um dispersments later to make uh remote learning possible. Um we'll, we'll at least have that equipment over and over again. So we saved two million dollars. We spent a couple hundred thousand dollars more. Um and, but we did a smart thing, you did a smart thing, district is is doing a smart thing, and saving that to invest in deferred maintenance, capital expenses, or transferring it to funds so we don't lose the money. So we're cleaning up um the finances of future financiers, helping future finances. So is that uh maybe not the cleanest way of explaining it, but uh
I think those are the main, main takeaway points. Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah. Thank you.
And with regard to these inter-fund transfers, you talked earlier about uh having discussed this with DPI or others as it relates to, yes, this is something that's above board.
Yep, correct.
Great.
Yeah, thank you, guys. We did not incur expenditures related to curriculum um with our curriculum cycle, with some of those things, and with Laura Jackson's department. Um as we're building next year's budget, and I will speak about this in a few minutes, I am mindful, there's things that, again, we put a spending freeze in, we we held pretty firm with that. Um but uh as as we look at next year's budget, or even, you know, there's, the auditors may make some uh budget adjustments or some act- activity adjustments to what we're seeing here. But at this point in time, and I mean, it's it's June, so we can see a lot of this activity that's already there, but it does align with what we anticipate with our both receding of revenues and incurring of expenditures for the year. So.
I move to accept the amended twenty twenty, twenty-one budget as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the amended twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget as presented. Any final discussion?
I think the, I think the motion needs to be nineteen twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nineteen twenty.
I'm reading off the drawing.
Was I looking at the wrong thing?
Sorry about that. Oh, yep.
You're right.
I move to accept the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget adjustments as presented. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you for the clarification. We have a motion to accept the amended twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget as presented. All right. With that clarification, any final discussion? Thanks, Joel. All in favor? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, thanks. And now on to proposed.
Yeah, so I do have, again, a very similar document. Um I'm going to jump in and just share a little bit of a um this, and this is meant to be fairly easy, and I've I've got a page that that is the numeric version of this, but it's a three, it's a three-tiered calculation of where our equalized state aid is. This is nineteen twenty, and I can kind of scroll up. This is straight off of the DPI website. I PDF'd it. It's an Excel spreadsheet, interactive. But really what this says is, there's three tiers, and this little light X right here is us. Okay? That can change on a horizontal scale, and what the horizontal end is, how mu- down here, how much property value we have per child that we're educating, that we have able, that we're able to count per member. The vertical, and that can change up and down, is the shared cost per member. You can kind of think of it as how much we spend per child, but there's some additions and subtractions that go into it. It's not just the revenue limit. It's not all of our spending divided by our sixty-three hundred kids. There's some adjustments. They take out the football, um gate receipts. They, there's some things that they add and subtract from it. But generally speaking, this X represents us for two thousand nineteen twenty. And what they do is if you draw a vertical line right here, and you can kind of see a little bit of a gray, and then it comes up through the X, is that anything to the right, or excuse me, to the left? Let me make sure I get this right. Hold on just one second. There we go. Anything that's to the left of the X for each of these three different areas is what we would receive, what we would raise through property taxes. Think of it as like two shells. Again, revenue limit equals property taxes plus state aid. The left side is property taxes over here, and anything to the right in these areas is what we need to raise through sta- or what we would receive through state aid. So if you say we have less property value, and if I shift over the X, and I can't, it's a PDF, but if I shift this over, that means we're less property poor, or we're more, excuse me, we're more property poor, we would actually receive more aid from the state, less property taxes. If we actually shifted this over to the right, we're going to need to raise more in taxes. We'll receive less in state aid. So if I draw this line down right here where this gray is, we're almost right in between the I and the V and positive primarily aid. In that section, we're receiving about, let's just say, sixty percent state aid, forty percent property taxes for that one section. That's on the first thousand dollars of money that we receive. Keep that line drawn up, and I'm just going to keep it right here, right around the A and secondary. All of a sudden, that second chunk of money that goes from one thousand and one up to nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars, all of a sudden, the percentage shifted because we're a little bit, we're a little bit more property-rich than the average school district in Wisconsin. All of a sudden, it went to about, what is that, about two-thirds is property taxes, a third is state aid? Right? Is that about right? Approximately? Coincidentally, and there's a third tier, call this kind of a stacked progression, and they do this visually on purpose, we're just above that secondary tier. We're all, we're actually spending, or we receive money into what's called tertiary. We're just above it by about fifty dollars. And because we're just above that, we're actually in what a district is called as negative tertiary aid. What happens there? Well, we're property-rich enough that the state says, you know what, you're so property-rich that not only do you get, you get that fifty dollars per student multiplied by sixty-three hundred kids, but you have to raise that money, and we're going to take some of your money and give it to a property-porer district.
We're barely property-rich enough to put us into that category.
We're barely spending enough. I mean, that that's, that's a hair, like, it's fifty dollars. But we're consider, no, I want, I want to go over real quick. So this, this is the actual graph. I said there's a graph, and this is the actual graph. There's our little X again. I'm just gonna, I I want to show you something real quick. Remember we're, we're just, we're just above, and we're not heavily negative aided. I mean, we're just barely spending enough. We're just over this line called the negative tertiary aid. I'm just going to show you because Webster is right next to it. And if you know where Webster is, it's up in Lake area, Lake Country, up by Spooner, north of Eau Claire, lot of, lot of waterfront and stuff like that. Uh where did Webster go? Maybe, who do I? There's Webster. Watch when I click that. We were right here. Webster is number one, spending more than us, which maybe because their revenue limit is higher than ours. We're at that low spending threshold. But second of all, they're way over because of all their property value. Now, our property value, yes, we have a couple of lakes. We also have industry. We also have maybe a little bit more sparse students. We've got declining enrollment. Every year, our actual property value goes up a little bit because we have fewer students. Our property values are going up, our students are going down. It makes us appear as though we're more property-rich, and therefore we get less state aid because of that. Webster, they just have all that lakefront. I'm going to go back to the district now, our district. So we're, we're, we're back here. But just as a point, I want, I want to share this because this is exactly why we, 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 we want, we need to be mindful of how we spend this year because we're right on that threshold of that negative aid. And I actually left, I forget if I uh, I closed it. Oh, right here. Um when we look at the current year, this is our general fund, I actually left about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We'll add that to fund balance for the current year. That's what you just approved. The three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fund balance, where we won't spend that, will actually dip us back down right on the threshold of that secondary aid. We'll be butting up right against that negative tertiary aid, but we won't have to give money to the property-porer districts. That's the game, for for the lack of a better term. Brittany was playing it for a few years. Um so you, you may have had this discussion in the past, but that's exactly what we're doing, is we're trying to maximize that state aid for next year based on this year's spending. So that's kind of that explanation. So if you'd like a Finance One-O-One, or if we could even go into a One-O-Two at some point, I'd, I'd certainly entertain that uh discussion because there's a little bit more to it than that. But I hope what I kind of shared tonight was, is it all right? Want to talk afterwards? Give me a call, or even in the next couple of weeks or something like that. But um so I'm going to jump two thousand twenty, twenty-one, which um I don't want to make light of this process because we do need a formal approval of a preliminary budget. The reason that we do that is it's hard to say, hey, let's start spending money through payroll, buying things, um when the board hasn't taken action. So um a lot of these are assumptions right now. I'm going to tell you right now, things will change because I've made assumptions that we're going to have so many students, that the property values are going to go up by a couple percent. Um we still don't know what what virtual is going to look like next year. Um we may have more open enrollment students out. We may have more students try to take us up on whatever we might offer. So there's a lot of unknowns at this point in time. So again, I don't want to make light of this process, but there are a lot of assumptions. I've tried to highlight what that might be. This is the first time, I think this is my twenty-first year in doing this. It's the first time I've brought a scenario A and a scenario B. Makes me a little bit uncomfortable doing that because the recommended uh motion that I put in the executive summary is motion to approve as presented. Well, we kind of have to pick A or B, but the thing is, A and B, the difference between the two is very, very minimal because there's two exemptions that we have. We have a declining enrollment exemption that's about two million dollars, and then there's actually a second exemption called the hold harmless, that even if we weren't able to get the three hundred dollar increase in our revenue limit that was a part of this biennial budget, even if we don't get that, this next year, we still get access to the same amount of monies that we had this year, and the difference between scenario A and scenario B is a fifty-five thousand dollar variance. Very, very minimal because of this hold harmless exemption. Now the, the, the difficult part is, in going back the two million dollars from the current year that you just approved, where we shifted some money around, we're going to need that. I think we're really going to need that. And why I say that is because the state is telling us right now that they're going to be okay for this next year. It's really twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, that next biennial budget, that we're going to start seeing some of those financial impacts of the virus and the shutdown, and the ability to collect those taxes to give the district, or even our, our taxpayers here in the district, their ability to generate our revenue through the taxes. So I really think that it's going to be a smart plan, continue to hold fairly tight, utilize any monies that we have the ability to put in a reserve account, still have some flexibility, but then be able to not just use that in this year right here if it's needed because that's still possible. The state could still open up what next year looks like. But again, scenario A and scenario B are fairly indifferent. Fifty-five thousand dollars difference between the two scenarios. We're going to need that for a few, a year in the future. We're going to need it for the following school year. So.
Andy, quick question before you go on from there. Um since the state is off by literally millions and millions and millions of dollars of sales tax, and we're about to see millions of other businesses probably go bankrupt and not pay their property taxes, um at what point does the state say, hey, we made another mistake, and um we're actually not going to give you what we said we were going to give you? So when will you know that?
We, we don't know. Um we're estimating that we might-
So perhaps a scenario C might be in order. So perhaps a scenario C might be in order, huh?
That, that, that is possible, yep.
Well, I, I really think that we need to be prepared for that. I'm, I'm, you know, I realize that, uh, it's the white elephant in the room, I'm preaching to the choir, but anybody who's in industry has either had to furlough some staff, taken a personal pay cut, we've not implemented anything like that here in the district, and I don't wanna be the bearer of bad news, but, you know, we're gonna have to probably, besides, uh, you know, look at our enrollment, I mean, we've got some pretty big salaries sitting here, and, uh, we're gonna have to look at some of that in the future. I mean, I do not believe the state is going to have the revenues to give to us like they promised. And I think it's gonna hit us sooner than later, and I think that you're foolish if you think it's going to wait until the following school year. I, I believe you'll see a problem coming up in the fall. I, the state will never, they don't have the balances to accommodate everything that they're giving away. I mean, it's gotta come from somewhere, and, you know, we can, um, we can joke about printing money, but the state doesn't have that ability, and if we keep printing it, you know, in Washington, it's gonna be worth about what, you know, monopoly money is. So, um, it doesn't take a finance degree to figure that part out. So I really think we need to be considering a scenario C here, where we look at, um, further cuts in other areas, because it's not gonna be pretty.
Yeah, so as we've had our budget building process, uh, throughout the spring, and again, I mean, much of it was finalized, and not finalized in the sense it was planned for back in February, even prior to all of this, um, we have contingency plans, even if there was a, a slight reduction in the revenue limit that would impact our true revenue, not, not from scenario A to scenario B, but we have a plan that we would be able to implement, and, and it would be very difficult in the sense that there would be layoffs, yep, yep.
I would suggest salary cuts as well, at least to some portion or percentage that we've seen, um, you know, the private sector. I, I mean, that's unrealistic to assume that we're not going to have to dip into our fund balances, or, or do some pretty drastic measures here to continue to, um, provide service to our students.
Thank you. With our general fund, and again, I, I'll go over it fairly quick, again, I hope fairly comprehensive, this is a two thousand eighteen, nineteen activity, um, the asterix in the two thousand nineteen, twenty amended budget, that was assuming that you guys approved at the prior agenda item, scenario A and scenario B with a variance between the two, and you can see a slight, uh, change. Again, this is very tentative at this point in time, it does not reflect all of the areas that we've identified as being flexible. Again, we don't know what the virtual environment is gonna be next year, who's actually gonna show up in the fall and want to be instructed by our teachers onsite, or is, what, what type of delivery is that going to be? So, um, as we continue to evolve in that, and as we learn new information, um, we, we will make sure that that information, um, is developed and implemented, and, uh, carried forward through the numbers. Um, general fund, a balanced budget regardless, balanced budget is presented, um, I do have in scenario A versus B, um, a slight increase in the fund balance, again, because of how much money, I could see in scenario B, not transferring as much money either into Fund Forty-One or Fund Forty-Six, leaving that money sitting there, um, we may have the same discussion a year from now, as to what to do with that if there truly was a surplus, um, but, uh, scenario A and B, that's the variance, uh, with, with the general fund, with the ending, ending balance. Fund twenty-one, it is what it is, again, these are student dollars, the only thing that would really impact that is if, if their normal bake sales and all their other fundraising and spending for their clubs and groups changed, um, this next year, but we're anticipating about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars regardless. Fund twenty-seven, special education, again, um, what, where are we going to be with instructing these, uh, these children? And, uh, that could vary based on, um, what, what type of delivery model we have, and so there is a little bit of a variation with, uh, scenario B, if, if, uh, some of the salaries and benefits were a little bit, uh, different, um, and maybe even holding tight, again, these, these are IEP-driven, but we'll have to see who we're gonna be educating.
So Andy, looking at twenty-seven on the salaries and, and especially on Fund Ten, you know, given the two different scenarios, how do you, how do you plan that kind of staffing when a lot of these, I'm assuming, are contracted personnel?
We, we do have some attrition, um, I think earlier you voted on another resignation and whatnot, so we can hold tight on some of those contracted expenditures, um, some of those teacher, um, contracts, we do have our hourly staff, which are at-will employees, um, but a lot of this is really, um, trying to hold tight for as long as we can, with, um, understanding who's going to show up, um, on September third.
Thank you.
Fund twenty-seven, again, these are IEP-driven expenditures, and, and based on who we're providing those services to, there could be a variation, and I know it will be different from this, it will not be scenario A or B, it's either gonna be a combination between the two, or even, as Nancy indicated, a third scenario that will eventually develop. Fund twenty-nine, head start, again, federal money, this is through our grant allocation, um, I don't know the likelihood of this changing, but a slight increase, there's a hundred thousand dollars, you can see increase from the current year, uh, for next year, uh, where we're given additional stimulus money, um, but that's a part of the, uh, grant allocation preliminary budget at this point in time. Fund thirty-eight, Fund Thirty-Nine, which is our non-referendum and our referendum debt, these are our debt schedules, uh, based on that, so no change with Fund Thirty-Eight. Fund Thirty-Nine is where I have a little bit of a variance, um, between the two of them, um, and if we try to hold, and again, very tentative, 'cause I'm, I'm estimating what our property values will be, and if we hold our mill rate, or the percentage, taxation percentage, flat, to seven dollars and ninety-seven cents, it still looks like we could potentially, um, defuse some debt. Again, we'll have to see what that looks like this fall, at this point in time, I'm planning on that, um, but it might not materialize. We'll have to see what happens as things progress throughout the summer and into the fall.
So Andy, on, on scenario B there, you know, it's looking like, what, two-point-nine million potentially in defeasance?
Yep.
That money has to stay in that, that budget, that can't be put back into the general fund.
Exactly, yep, has to be used for that purpose, of, of paying some future debt related to that. Yep, yep. And the only difference between the two is the original fifty-five thousand dollars from the general fund. Again, if you try to balance out at that same mill rate, again, very tentatively, that's the only difference with Fund Thirty-Nine. Fund Forty-One, which are capital improvements, and again, this is where we're gonna start to see some of that activity change, um, from what we've done in the past, where I'm recommending, um, we, we may still transfer that full two-point-one million dollars this next year, we may not. Um, we need, we need to make sure that those decisions between Fund Forty-One, Fund Forty-Six, um, hold true with how we need to spend them to impact our future year's revenue limits and, and state aid. Fund Forty-Nine, again, this is where I mentioned a few moments ago on the earlier agenda item, we may wish to, we, we may have to, again, to balance the budget, we may say, let's not transfer as much into Fund Forty-One, but we're gonna spend some of that Barton money. That may be a prudent thing to do at this point in time, we'll have to see. So I just noted that in scenario B, on the bottom right in the orange, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that it's possible we could begin spending that money to help balance the budget, to be able to, to provide services to our students. Fund fifty, again, very big variable, how we're going to be, uh, are, are we going to have children onsite starting in September, um, that is the big piece at this point in time, but very little difference between scenario A and scenario B with, with nutrition, providing those breakfasts and lunches to, uh, to our, our students, um, very, very similar there. Fund seventy-three, again, very, um, minimal impact, that's something that we're required to do, if we so choose to do it, we're either all-in or all-out, um, but, uh, no variation between scenario A and scenario B. I have increased the dollar amount transfer from one and a quarter up to one and a third million dollars. Um, I anticipate that, uh, over the next couple of years, as we have some continued retirements, we're going to need to keep, uh, putting monies, setting that aside for future use. Fund eighty, which is our, uh, community services, with our SROs, middle school sports, uh, providing some of those services to things outside of a typical school day, no real difference, uh, still plan on spending about sixty thousand dollars of fund balance, um, through the SRO, where we added, we're up to four, I think, so, uh, that, that continues, slight increase from the state from the current year to next year, um, but, uh, continuing with those, uh, services. Fund ninety-nine, you'll see, this is where I saw, I saw that decrease, the actual activity for this, um, boys hockey, um, we anticipate being closer to eighty thousand rather than a hundred and five thousand, as the fiscal agent for next year. This does not include the stimulus money, is the ESSR, which is the elementary, secondary, um, uh, emergency relief funds, where, uh, we have access to about four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. A little bit of it, we believe, has to go to the title schools, um, that would provide those services to our private schools, um, but, uh, we believe we have pretty free and clear, um, access to those monies, this budget does not include that. Virtual education is very preliminary at this point in time, both as it relates to open enrollment, or how we're going to provide that service, um, this next year. I did allow for a slight open enrollment increase, as well as a slight voucher increase, remember, the voucher's been doubling every couple of years, I allowed for a little bit of an increase again, um, that's really on the back end, it nets out to be zero, because we're allowed to levy for that, but it would impact maybe the defeasance amount that we've been using. So, I think we've been trying to cover just about everything with as much unknown variables as there is. There's a fair amount, which is not uncommon, it's just a little bit more than typical at this point in time.
Do you know what the mill rate is in these two scenarios? Is the mill rate flat?
Mill rate is flat, with both of these scenarios continuing to defuse two-point-nine million dollars, at seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. It doesn't mean we're going to be levying less money, it's just the, the, the taxation rate would be the same.
Correct.
I'm sorry, sir.
And the mill rate would, if it's under eight, would still, we don't know what other school districts are doing, but it would be one of the lowest in the county.
It continues to be one of the lowest in the county.
Just a comment on what Nancy had said earlier, Nancy, everything, I agree a hundred percent with you, everything I've seen, they're talking a minimum of a two-billion-dollar shortfall in revenue, and we have about six hundred million dollars in a rainy day fund, and so, that's about a one-point-four-billion-dollar shortfall that has to be made up someplace. And so I, I, I a hundred percent agree that it's, it might not be two years down the road, it might be next year, might be sooner rather than later.
Is, noting that, is there any plans to, for lack of a better word, survey our, our stu- that seems to be the big wild card, take a hundred students from each grade? Do you plan on having your student attend in the fall, when we open up, or just with the assumption that we're having face-to-face? If they say yes, good, thank you, we'll see you in the fall, if they say no, well, are you looking at virtual schools, or whatever? I just-
Yeah, something that I can work with our other leadership and see if we can't-
I, I would just caution you on how you, when you put something like that out, you, you are adding to the PR nightmare that is going on, and, and I will make a political statement with that, you know, the media has driven this thing into a frenzy, and, and there's not been great leadership, not on the part of anyone in this room, I'm talking from the top down. And people are looking for answers, they're not looking for more questions at this point. So I, I would caution you with whatever you're going to put out there, um, because now you've just opened it to say, well, should I not send my child to school? What, what am I doing? Why, oh my God, what's gonna happen? So, you know, the whole point is just, if we're gonna do something, never use words as a leader like maybe, or kinda, those are bad words to use as a leader, okay? We should be saying words like, we'll reassess, and we'll give dates, and, and that kind of thing, because when we give wishy-washy words like that, then people have more questions. So just, if we're gonna do a survey, I'm, I'm gonna caution everyone to really think long and hard about the words that you choose, and the way it is put out to the public.
Thank you.
So Andy, this is a preliminary budget, can you just walk through the timeline of how that, I know that was one of the things when I was new on the board, you realize, wait a minute, this isn't, I'm gonna say this isn't really the budget, but this isn't really the budget.
Yep, correct, yeah. So, um, I, I think you set the levy last year, uh, last October, uh, mill rate levy on October twenty-sixth, and the next day, I crunched the numbers, we understood where we were with, um, no, as, again, estimating, making some assumptions, we've worked all spring, um, so this is a preliminary budget to start July first. We will only be incurring expenditures between salaries and benefits, and then anything that's truly essential, because we do know that this could change. I wouldn't want something to happen in October, and we incurred a big expenditure, or even a little expenditure, and say, boy, I wish we wouldn't have done that, I wish we would have waited, because then I wouldn't have done that. So anything that we're gonna be spending here, beginning July first, is going to be essential, I'd like to point that out as well. Our next steps, we will continue to make changes to this, we'll continue to grab current information, the next big piece is that on, uh, September twenty-eighth, we're gonna have our annual meeting, that'll be the hundred and first, be meeting at the auditorium, uh, excuse me, the Silver Lining Arts Center, um, and that would be the annual meeting, where there's a district presentation, a financial, uh, with the resolutions, um, being brought forward, for non-binding input from the community. Um, the final information, the final budget, the levy, the mill rate is not all finalized, I think we have a meeting on October twenty, is it Monday, uh, twenty eighth, I think? Thank you, yep, and then, uh, at the end of October as well, so, um, big, big piece of information will be available on October fifteenth, the DPI and the Department of Revenue releases all our information with our actual property values, anything like that legislatively, it's a waiting game right now. Um, we do need to be mindful of that, that things could change, we're prepared, um, for as mu- we have some flexibility, uh, there's an article in the newspaper here a couple of weeks ago that said, ah, the district's fine. Well, we're not, this, this could be ve- rather difficult, um, but we're fine up to a point, even with some fairly large sacrifices, so. Does that answer your question?
That does, yes, and I just, you know, just to, just to clarify, this is obviously an important thing for us to vote on, but there is a built-in process to adjust this as we learn more information, and that this is, this is typical, that we go through these various phases, this being the most, the, the initial, the preliminary.
Yep, thank you.
Any other discussion on the preliminary budget?
So the action that we take is we have to select scenario A or B, correct?
I, I would, I, I would select scenario A or B, it's tent, again, it's preliminary, it's tentative, um, but you could, you could pick one of the two knowingly, that it's not going to be in September, and then again, in October, it will not be either of these, but we do need an approval on a preliminary budget.
Andy, do you have a recommendation, on A or B?
You know, um, the, the scenario B with a zero-dollar increase in the revenue limit is going to be more appropriate.
I, I don't know, in the past, we've selected a scenario, um, because, you know, as Nancy pointed out, I think later this week, you might be working on a scenario C, which is, could be a negative whatever, um, I don't know if, I think-
We haven't selected a scenario because you haven't presented a scenario, or alternate scenarios in the past.
I, I have not, I, I have not, yep. This is the first time that I've ever done this, it would not surprise me if it's the first time in recent history in our district that any, that two different scenarios have been presented at this point in time. I need to make sure that you're aware that things could change, that's what's important to me at this point in time, so with the information that we have access to right now, scenario A and B are our best estimates of what could happen, knowingly that it will vary yet.
I guess it doesn't matter, I mean, it, they're-
They're both a crapshoot, but I, I, I think, I think given, given where we're at, given what we believe is around the corner, I think the responsible option of what's presented here is to, um, take scenario B. So I'll throw a motion out there to accept a preliminary twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget scenario B as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve budget scenario B, uh, as preliminary budget for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, the motion carries, thanks for walking us through that, lots of moving parts, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. And then, uh, one of the last planned items on our agenda is approval of curricular resource for high school entrepreneurship course. Tim and Laura.
Good evening, Board, uh, Mr. Kirk, he wanted me to take about twenty minutes tonight.
Yeah.
This is his last agenda item, this evening? Oh, all right, good, 'cause I don't have a presentation, um, I've just got my computer for backup. So in front of you tonight, um, is a proposal, um, for the approval of adoption of a, um, curricular resource for our, um, updated and redesigned, um, TC Entrepreneur Academy course. Um, if you remember a while back, we had a course that was a semester-long course, um, we took that course and we expanded it to a year. Um, the course will stay as a technical college credit course, um, aligned with Moraine Park, but going to a year-long course, we needed some more, um, in-depth curricular materials and to provide our, our students with some additional options. Um, this, um, resource piece was reviewed by, or these resources were reviewed by two of the business and information technology teachers, um, along with myself, over the course of the year, um, and the one that we have in front of you from the Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship, um, is really what we believe is the best, um, selection for us, it provides our students with a hands-on learning opportunity where they actually build a full business plan- It provides our students with a hands-on learning opportunity where they actually build a full business plan. Um, they build a variety of other different pieces. They have the ability to compete, um, in a little bit of a shark take type thing, um, both regionally and at the state level and, and nationally if they so choose. So, um, the budget side of this is taken care of through our Carl Perkins, which is a funding, uh, avenue for CTE funding through the federal government and the training of the teachers for that. So any questions?
Any questions? I move to approve the adoption of the Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship Curricular Resources to support the TC Entrepreneur Academy course at the high school level.
Second.
Motion and second. Any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
So just to show you my leadership, I had a over-under at 7:30. And I took the 7:30 and Jen, I'm sorry, you're way, and Andy was going to be the wild card. We knew that, but it really wasn't even Andy because, because it was already past the 7:30 when Andy got up. So that wasn't that. So I just wanted to, again, thank you for the opportunity. I really have appreciated my time in West Bend. It was, uh, too short, but, uh, my wife and I are really excited to go back to our home in South Dakota. And I truly mean it when I say if you ever are out in the Black Hills, then certainly give me a holler and I'll give you a VIP tour of the hills and we'll see all the different, you can go all the way from Devil's Tower up over into Wyoming to the Badlands, to Mount Rushmore, to Custer State Park. And there's a, a lot of beautiful things to see. And so please come and visit. The other thing I really wanted to mention because it's our, we are in some difficult times and, and we have been proactive all the way along. And so tomorrow we have leadership with our, our principals and Sharon and Jen are going to have, one of the things that we've been talking about for a long time is the socially emotional needs, social emotional needs of our, our district. And so they're going to start that presentation tomorrow. It'll follow through in the fall with our teachers and students. And so that's not just because of what's happening right now. It's something that had been planned for many months in advance. And the other part is Laura will be talking about the diversity agenda and what we're going to be looking at for different opportunities for our students and teachers for this fall and going forward. And that also is not new because of what's happening right now. It's because it was something that we knew that we had to do and Laura's been pushing the envelope on diversity for quite some time. And we know that that's important for all of us. And so, um, thank you and, um, we'll, this is my last official meeting in Wisconsin. And so I'm going to be here tomorrow for part of the day and then, um, off to South Dakota and we'll be, um, doing some, have my computer and, uh, virtual for a couple of days. And then next week I'll be off. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Don. All right, future agenda items. Our board meeting calendar is published, uh, here in the, uh, in, in the book. There is one quick item that I wanted to ask the board. Uh, graduation reps at the various, uh, at the various graduation ceremonies. Now, we've got two, uh, board members, I believe, with children graduating this year, correct? Kurt?
Yes. I have a daughter graduating from West Bend East.
Congratulations in advance. I think you have one as well.
Technically, yes. She will not be there. She is up at a, a camp, uh, northern Wisconsin, coming back August 7th. And I have volunteered myself to work with Tim and, uh, some folks behind the scenes on, on the audio reinforcement side. So I would respectfully ask to step down and not have to worry about coming up and handing out diplomas or shaking hands, whatever the plan might be.
I think, I think we're clear on the, uh, on the shaking of hands. I think the diplomas are going to be placed at seats if I remember right, but thank you for that. So, um, uh, rather than belabor this, what I may do is, uh, work with administration. Uh, Jen, maybe you and I can work together. We'll, we'll poll the board members and see who can, uh, who can attend. Unless there are volunteers who really want to jump into place, if you're okay, we'll follow up with that after the fact. Only one for each. Okay. Excellent. Well-
I assume you want to go to east.
You want east?
I would, uh, I'd appreciate it.
All right. All right. And I'll work with you. We'll, we'll find a volunteer then for, for West. Is there any other, any other items to come before the board? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. Uh, any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Lots of stuff on the agenda and appreciate, uh, all of, uh, faculty's work on this administration. Thanks.